Great, thank you. And welcome to Tuesday, April 23rd, select board meeting. Agenda is as follows: community input, appointments and resignations, fiscal '25 budget and town meeting, fire station renovation goals discussion, two-year road maintenance plan, 14 SD Road Sewer Agreement, TA report, cemetery deeds, minutes and warrants, liaison reports, and community input. We sometimes take items out of order, depending on how our time is going, and the rules for community input is that individuals have a one-minute limit for their remarks. We always ask that people, if they need to tell us more than can fit in one minute, please write us an email, which would then be attached to our agenda packet. And...
Let me see. David is here. David Modell is here.
I'm here in spirit.
In spirit, great. So, all of our votes will be taken by roll call tonight. So, we'll start with community input. Is there anybody online that would like to offer some community input?
I think there's someone here.
Oh. John?
Yes.
This is for community input?
Yes, this is community input. And, John Valentine, 268 Fifth Street. And the first thing I wanted to offer you, since you were going through the process of grading yourself and doing self-evaluation on the warrant and planning, I want to compliment you on that. And particularly, and I looked not carefully at the long-term warrant book, but it's really important what you've done, and it's a lot of work, and I want to give you a lot of kudos for that, and sort of moving towards a five-year plan. So, that's the... And so, what I put in front of you was, of course, my concern has always been kind of looking out longer term and having a facilities plan that kind of moves beyond the transactional and the warrant book and the budget, which is, as you know, consumes a tremendous amount of time. And so, I think that's kind of one of the dilemmas you've had, and I know you're trying to move that way, and Ryan's trying to help you move that way, and Julie's doing that. So, that's really, how do we get to be more strategic? And the master plan layout, sort of the broader-term needs, but as you see, as we look at this, and this is what you're kind of operating within the constraints of what the town has or what you perceive and what we've all perceived the town has, of a kind of a 3% increase in taxes, average taxes over some period of time, with a couple little bumps here and there. And I, as an economist, look at, and this is a longer-term issue, is sort of tax incidence, is what's the level of taxes to income? And as we become a more wealthy town, there may be times when you're willing to absorb more taxes. So, that's the kind of dilemma we're looking at. The more important part, and this is, and I talked to Jerry Lehrman about this, is how do we get beyond all the different sort of silo perspectives? And I happen to be involved in four of these efforts. Jerry, I think, is involved in five, you know, whether it be the bog house and worker housing, the fire station. I'm also involved in the community center and talking to the school about high limit and sort of longer-term issues and high limit. We need to sort of integrate that. And I suggest, and I know the town meeting suggested, I'm probably going over by one minute, and I apologize, thinking about how do we, either we use the municipal facilities, maybe break it apart as one part of saying, how do we think out five, 10 years? And what is the sort of staging of putting these things in place? And on that committee, you need to have an architect. Yes, you can use house doctors to do things, but you need to have people do that, sort of looking out longer term, that you guys do that and it's presented. And I think, so you've got to say, we've got this tension, which is clearly here now, but we've got to really think, when we're a town of 6,000-plus, how do we do this and how do all these visas put together? And so, that's what I urge you to do and think about. And that's not easy, and our world's getting more complex, and it's going to be more complex. The Housing Choice Act has obviously been doing it. We've got all the climate change issues. We've got everything happening, and that's what we need to think about five, 10 years from now, not just next year. How do we get the fire station built? So, that's my comment, and obviously, I'm glad to help and work on that.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else online? Christina was just here, but I guess she went home. Okay. Online. So, seeing none at 7:05, we'll go to appointments and resignations.
Looks like there's no, just a notification.
Resignation.
Resignation. There's a resignation letter, and on the, there is a... Oh, I see, it's just a notification. Board's hereby notified of the retirement effective April 12th, 2024, Lois Hartley, from her position of COAHS driver. And we would like to recognize her with gratitude, her service with gratitude.
Yes, thank you, Lois, for your service.
Any other comments around that? Are we looking for somebody new, Ryan, for that position?
They say no.
We will be, yes. We're always looking to hire...
Carol says no.
Carol said no? Okay.
Carol said today in the board meeting, right, that they're not looking to backfill that position.
Why would advise the council agency to continue to look for drivers, because they go quick?
That's fine. Just reporting the facts, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Budget. We have a draft letter that was, or a letter drafted by Travis for our discussion and adoption for him and authorization for him to send to the mosquito.
And I just wanted to say, you know, that came about because we had talked about it as a board and thought, if we're going to promote this as a board, we should make some public statement about it. So, I took the lead in drafting it. But I'd prefer it to come from the board and not from me, you know, even though I think it says my name at the bottom, but I'd like to have everyone's name.
Could we change to the select board?
I agree.
But the letter I sent after the fact just had some edits on it from another review.
Different from what's in our packet here?
V2 has...
It was in the packet. It's shown in red. This was on the email that I had sent.
Yeah, it's in the packet.
It's in the packet now. Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, we got to revise that.
That is for my packet.
Yep. Thank you.
I think that's great. Thank you for putting these together.
I love these... Yes. I agree with Nathan.
That you love the packets?
No, well, no. He said he liked the letter.
Oh, good. Thank you.
I think that's what I heard.
Thank you.
Yes, I too, Travis, think it's a good letter, and we should submit it. Technically, do we all have to sign it, a physical signature?
No, the chair can sign. I went through that this week.
So, would...
The chair can sign on our behalf.
And what about the vice chair?
You can if you want.
Well, I just... Should we all sign it? Is that it?
No, I just said, Betsy said, "One signature by the chair is sufficient."
Yes.
You're all welcome to sign it, but that's what you told me.
Right. In other words, at the bottom it said, it will say, "Select Board."
Well, you put the names. What I did this week is I said, "Chair on behalf of the committee," and I listed all the committee.
So, you're the chair.
Okay.
If you want to submit it and just change the names at the bottom and put our names on it, or... I think it's just more effective if all the names, rather than...
I agree.
You had submitted a letter regarding the speech incident we had, and that came from you, and I, which is great, but I think that this, if we voted unanimously, probably makes sense to have all of our names on it.
Right.
When it's everybody and when it's not everybody.
Yes. In that case, it was because we didn't have time to convene the board to...
Right, which, fine. I have no issue.
Yeah, I'm just... All right.
So, do you need a motion then?
I need a motion to submit this to the mosquito on behalf of the board.
I move that we approve the letter as drafted in our packet to be submitted to the mosquito on behalf of the select board.
I second that.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. I'll take care of that tomorrow.
Thanks, Travis.
Actually, it should have been done, well, it'll be next week's. That's probably enough. Okay.
You can, yeah, Tuesday through.
We don't have to rush this through.
That's right.
We're, it's timely.
Probably would take it.
Well, yeah, it's not worth imposing on her for this.
While we're on this topic, though, is there, I know that we have some information on the town website that's part of the town meeting, or not, no, I guess it's more, is there a town, is there a section on the town website about the ballot, the town elections, that has any information about this proposal? I haven't looked specifically at the town elections.
It's a little tricky. So, the ballot is available on the town website, and I was going to walk you through some of the advertising we're doing for town meeting and information. However, the, so the question is there, but I'm not sure that it's appropriate to have any advocacy on that page, especially since it's run by the town clerk. So, I'm trying to think of ways that you could promote it. We could send it out as a blast that these are the election questions, but that's all the town.
So, yeah, my question then would be, what, is there more that we want to do in terms of providing information to people through various avenues? You know, there's been a little bit, for those of you that follow City in the Woods, there's been some discussion recently on that site, and there's been reference to the Town Governance Task Force report on that site, as well as in Travis's letter. But, yeah, what more do we think would be appropriate in terms of providing information in advance of the town election?
Well, we're, I mean, we are endorsing it through this letter, right? So, we're endorsing it. Ryan, I realize the town can't take a position, but can the town report facts? Facts are, it passed at a town meeting vote last time. Facts are, the Town Governance Task Force recommended it. Isn't it okay to link those things? Say, would that be considered advocacy, or is that just reporting the facts?
I think we can say it's a ballot question.
Ryan, we can say that.
He's saying no.
So, the law, the law is, you can't use town resources to advocate for a ballot.
So, we can't advertise, we can't buy a paid advertisement for that.
You can't say that the select board endorses using any taxpayer dollars.
Right, 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 got it.
So, we, well...
We can do this letter.
Maybe, do you want to amend the, you've said it kind of in the letter, or you've already said it in the letter, so that's all you can do.
I'm stating our position, and it's going in the...
Well, you also buttressed it with the, I don't have that in front of you.
Yeah, the town governance report.
You mentioned the governance report, and they'll link to it, so...
Which is a good thing. What about other boards and committees, though?
Unless there's...
Yeah, considering this and taking a position on it. Which, you know, and again, they'd have to somehow publicize their position, because it doesn't get, won't get discussed at town meeting.
I think it'd be better if we did a forum or, and/or, you know, an agenda item around this, invite people to attend that, or further discussion, you know, as, or as part of a hearing around, are we going to do another hearing around our warrant before?
We have one more meeting.
We have one more meeting? Should we do that around the budget again, you know, another primer?
So, there is business. The department revolving funds, we want to go over that with you for the motion that's going to be made at town meeting. Everything else is pretty much said, except for the dollar amount for transfer to capital stabilization, but I don't think that's controversial, because it was discussed in context. So, you could add the ballot questions to the town meeting slash town election discussion at the next select board meeting.
And maybe, and rather than discussion, put...
Public comment?
Public, well, it's enough for public outreach, you know, and...
It's community information or...
Then you may want to revise the letter to say that.
Ah, to add.
To add.
Add that to the letter, that such and such agenda, we invite everybody to come to talk about, to hear about the warrant, articles, and the election.
I authorize you to do that.
Okay.
Unless everyone knew, just to have that at the end.
I approve of the chair taking editorial.
Okay.
Taking your editorial.
Yeah, I think that would make some sense.
Yeah.
Sure.
Okay.
Sure. All right. And then note to us, Ryan, for tomorrow, is that we put that on our next agenda, and we'll fix the letter tomorrow when we're at our...
You have a whole week almost, Monday afternoon.
Yeah, well, but I'll do it tomorrow.
Get it off your desk.
Yeah. I have a very short memory and very, very narrow bandwidth these days, so, okay. Great. Anything else about, would you like to let us know anything else around the warrant and the...
I would.
Yes.
So, the...
Budget and town meeting.
All right. So, the different ways we're trying to advertise this to people, and if you hear anyone saying, "I haven't heard anything about town meeting," then you can direct them in this way. So, we've put physical posters at most of the places that Carlileans go. It has a QR code, so they can bring them to this exact page, which is found here on the website. This link right here, the most prominent link, takes you to the upcoming town meeting page, which we've populated with the main documents. And then, for every warrant article that has a presentation, we will add background information and the presentation and relevant documents, so people can go as deep or not as deep as they want to go. So, the warrant book itself would be the high level, and then they can click farther into the documents. So, this is at ferns, the library, the police station, any place where the public goes, we are trying to get people to look at this. So, this is the town meeting website. We also have a communications plan on our town social media, so more than 200 people follow our social media sites now, more on Instagram.
Couple hundred now.
So, every day Aubrey's posting an article of the day to bring people deeper into that conversation. It all links back to that same page, which is a dynamic page that we're updating. And then, I'm holding coffee hours every week until the town meeting. If people want to come specifically to ask questions, we've offered to go where people are, if they want to gather in groups to ask us questions. Staff are willing to do that, go to people's homes or ferns or wherever they want to meet. And of course, you can come and talk to us at town hall about any of the articles. So, not all of them are staff-based, but we can certainly provide background information to anybody who wants it. So, we are doing our best. If anybody wants a warrant booklet, they are ready and available. We have placed them strategically around the town, but we will also deliver them to your house by fire truck, maybe. It's an option.
Only to Christine Lear.
And it reminds me, not that I think of trash when I think of you, Tom, but the transfer station, we should put some poster there.
Some disruption.
Some packs, some packets there as well, to make sure that they have enough. So, if you have any other ideas or anything to get the information out, we're doing our best to try and share as much as possible, so people are informed.
I heard from Audrey about, Aubrey, about the video. Do you want to talk a little bit about that plan?
Yes. So, the town meeting study committee, I don't want to steal their thunder, but they have a very fun video they're putting out to try and show people how underrepresented they are at town meeting if they don't go. So, a little bit of public shaming. And then, a second video we're creating is a simple video explaining each article. So, we're having, I'm doing a lot of them, as you can imagine, staff members, and then proponents of certain articles are going to do hopefully less than a minute on each article on how to find more information about it. So, we're trying a video. We weren't able to do it, but we're also trying a podcast-type thing for information as well. So, we're trying to find different ways to get information to residents and voters, so that, so that they can find the things that they're interested in and hopefully come and vote and talk about it. Then lastly, Chief Amendola and I have discussed another open house at the police station, probably right before your next select board meeting, for an hour. So, if people want to come and do a tour of the police station, and we plan on doing a virtual tour of sorts to post on the police's social media, and we'll obviously link it to our social media as well. So, there hasn't been a lot of questions about the police station, and we're hoping that if people have any, that they ask them, because we want them to be informed and make sure they're making a good decision at town meeting.
And I'm assuming we're doing the low-tech thing of the sign going up on the rotary for town meeting beforehand and...
Yes, I remember that.
Something at the transfer, outside the transfer station, on a, on a sandwich board. Good.
Yep.
I just have to say, wow.
I know, it's great. I mean, this is...
Never have we had this kind of information available in the town.
See how it does for participation.
Yes.
It may not be an information issue, it may be others.
Well, that's what we're trying to do.
It's an access to information.
I would say, I would say, you know, just while we're on the topic, so we're also, we designed a survey, this is a liaison report, but, you know, it's apropos. We designed a survey, Nancy Pierce is a very good survey designer, and we're putting it on an app, that people, people who go to the meeting will get hard copies or an app. That's the group that goes, and other people will be encouraged to fill out that don't go. And we're hoping to get some, more of the substantive issues of what are the impediments to not go. That's like, that's the main homework for the summertime. Like, we're doing a few things, like the video and some other stuff now, just to juice participation. There is a letter in this week's edition coming out about the, you know, you are effectively anointing 19 unelect, you are, by not going, you are elect, you are anointing an unelected representative for you and of the other 18 people who didn't go of that group, right?
Yeah.
And, but the main thing, I think, is to try to get a good survey, get enough participation that over the summer, we can really think, drill down into that and get at that, because I agree, I don't think it's lack of information. It's either, there's the obvious impediments like childcare, blah, 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 but I think there's just like, the town's running fine, I don't need to deal, and there's no issue hot, like, if there's a hot button issue, people show. If there's not, like, a $35 million budget is not a hot button issue. Yeah, 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 they know what they're doing. It should be interesting. It should be interesting.
Okay, good.
Town meeting. You should go.
Yeah. Otherwise, we're going to send the ex-marine, I mean, not marine, army, what were you, a what was it? He's looking at you. Yeah, you, yeah?
Mois?
Army.
I know, it's army, but it's like, what's that MP kind of thing? Were you like an MP?
Oh, yeah.
Military police?
I can say it. Just a couple changes, and I think you know this already, because it was reported by David, but you will be on the stage.
Yes.
People wanted that, so, and then, the finance committee did recommend all of the, all of the warrant articles at their last meeting. So, they dug in deep, and I thought they did a good analysis as well, and have recommended all of the articles that you recommended. So, that is, that is something you haven't been updated on, but that happened.
Did they hold a budget hearing?
They did, on the 17th.
And did they have any participation?
Yeah, I was there.
I don't think that Barney meant.
I know that's what, I know what Barney meant, I'm just telling. There was one other person from Aberdeen, Drive? Drive, yeah. I don't know who she really is. I just looked her up, because, see, you know, if she was a resident or whatever. And that was it.
We'll put that presentation up and advertise that hearing as well. I'm pretty sure there's a video that people can watch it, you know, whatever they want.
Good. It's great. All this effort is tremendous. Thank you, and to the rest of the staff.
Okay. 7:24, I don't know if there are going to be people coming in at 7:30 for the fire station, or if we should try to fill in with minutes.
Or the cemetery deed.
Or the cemetery deeds. Let's do the cemetery deeds. Number eight. Keep on doing the same.
Page 129, if you're working off the packet.
Yeah, no, I'm doing this.
I know you don't, Kate. Do you want me to make the motion?
If you have it up, that would be great.
I move to transfer land in the public burial ground at the Green Cemetery described as follows. Deed 820, Lot D, 335, Grave 1, to Edward Connors, former resident.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And we'll be sending these around to you for your signature. Okay.
Mark out the minutes?
Let's do the minutes. Let's be wild.
Thank you.
Let me see. Minutes. We only hit the April 2nd minutes. Is there a motion?
I move to accept the minutes of Tuesday, April 2nd, as in the packet.
Second.
Were there any amendments anybody wanted to offer?
No, I submitted my comments, and they were incorporated.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That's done. Okay, back to the agenda. Right, I think that's close enough to 7:30. We'll go on to the fire station renovation goals discussion. Take away, Ryan.
All right. So, I wanted to frame this for you, and I do believe that Julie's joining us. She's probably a couple minutes...
Oh, is she upstairs?
Not sure.
Oh, all right, I got you.
So, to, we intentionally did not have a framing document in here, but we can. So, we have the RFQ that was originally sent out, where we solicited some architects to help us. They were vetted by your designer selection committee, and then, we told you that we didn't think it was ready for a decision and that we wanted to rethink it. And that was, that was a bit ago. The reason for rethinking it was, we wanted to make sure that the RFQ accurately reflected your goals, and after having many discussions individually and as a group, we realized that maybe we're not there yet with, with the goals, which I think is an important shaping, shaping mechanism for the selection of the architect or whoever you're going to work with. So, I sent some, some notes out today that I will share with you now. So, to help the discussion, I think you need to think about costs, all right? So, the maximum cost you're willing to support within the five-year framework of taxes, five to 10-year, that John was talking about, and the tax impact of this decision, which we can show you with any tools that you request. Your thoughts on the goals of the project, so what are you trying to accomplish? So, so far, you've stated that you would like the Carlisle Fire Department to stay volunteer as long as possible, and then heard from the chief on why the programming that he's recommended matches that goal. Additionally, other goals, such as safety, gender parity, and others that were, that are things we're considering with all buildings, but specifically some of the problems at the fire department. Some thoughts on programming that you've already discussed, which include square fittage of the building, your tolerance for the chief's proposed program, vehicles and other things that you've received input from the community on, and then, your thoughts on a timeline and process. So, if this is going to go before, before taxpayers and residents at the next town meeting, then that, that will certainly dictate a certain amount of speed in this process. If that's not the goal, then a different timeline would be necessary. But if you do want to bring it to the next town meeting, then there are certain benchmarks that we could explain. Then lastly, there's been some conversations about, about the process that I would like to highlight to you and hopefully have you discuss. So, one of them is the RFQ process that we already went through. So, this would be sending out to any architect that wanted to bid on it, what you believe would be the qualifications necessary for that architect to accomplish this project for you. So, the more detailed you can be with that RFQ, the better. So, if you include things like costs and goals and don't do's, then architects who want to do your project will likely respond, and then you can interview them. You could have a designer selection committee for that, or you could just have the final architects come before the board, you know, with some, some members of the community here, so that you can vet out the candidates. You can, you can do that either way. There's also another process, the chief brought it up to me and discussed it with many other town managers and administrators, so you could go with an OPM process. You can, you can do that either way. There's also another process, the chief brought it up to me and discussed it with many other town managers and administrators, so you could go with an OPM process. So this is hiring your owner's project manager now, and having that OPM help guide you through the selection of the final architect and firm, maybe decision or on design or multiple designs that they could bring before you. And this would be the person that shepherded it from the conceptual design all the way through the construction. So that, that is another way to go. So that could be a architect that is just there to help you as a project manager and help you get through that. So there's, there's benefits to each type of process, and there's, there's downsides to each type of process. But I would like to highlight the main point for your selection of an architect and the process you choose is what, what information you're going to trust. So if you do hire an architect, you want to hire a person who, when they say to you, this project is less or more or different than you thought it would be, that you'd be willing to trust them based on their qualifications and all the stuff you've done beforehand, so that the decision is there. If you don't trust them, or you have some preconceived notions or biases, then when they present you something, it'll be easy to poke holes in it, and then we'll be back to square one. So, I think you should consider whatever process is going to build you the most trust in the, the people that are advising you. Work as hard as you can on the goals upfront, so that those are clear to whoever's helping guide you. And then, much like we did with the police station, you would be able to counter or rebuff any arguments against your goals and designs because you've already vetted that. For example, I don't think you should add X, Y, or Z. You could say, you know, that, that is a valid point, but we've already discussed that, and here's why it fits into our goals, et cetera. So it just makes for a stronger, more united product if you do that live work upfront. So we have myself, the chief, and our town planner here, and then all the things that you've seen so far to help you talk about this or answer any questions. We don't expect you to make a decision tonight, that would be great if you finished it all in the next half hour or so.
We'll design it too.
Yes. But this is really like, okay, let's get to the next decision point, so that we can move within the timelines you discussed. That's a lot of words, happy to slow it down and show you anything, or bring all of us up here to help you with this goals discussion.
Want to talk about yesterday?
No, I think that comes later. My, my judgment would be, we talk actually about goals first, just to reiterate kind of why we're doing this.
Yes.
And then talk about pricing, because that product may fit into the goals, and then from there, kind of go into the programming. I just, if I were, but you're the chair.
No, I, I'm, you, you look like you were ready to roll, so I wanted to.
Well, I, I thought about it a little bit, relative to, well, because I, I think it's important that people in the community know that we have, this is not just coming out of the blue, we've been through this process, we've had community input, we've had, you know, meetings, we've already heard from the chief on this, and we, you know, looked at, at this, the facility itself, we've looked for alternative facilities, depending if we needed one, but really getting into why do we need one? And I think we talked about this at the last meeting that we had talked about the fire station, is kind of narrowing it down to four primary things, which was, one, the, you know, right now, the protecting the health and safety of the firefighters, because they decam-, decontamination, they don't have proper decontamination areas for their equipment. And so that's an essential thing that needs to be added for protection of our, of our citizens and our, our firefighters. The second would be more on the gender equity side of things, relative to the changes in the, you know, makeup of the force itself. When it was originally built, the fire department was only all male, I think. And now there's, I think, thirty or thirty percent of chiefs here, approximately.
Right now, it's more like a quarter, but.
Twenty-five percent female, and we have one single set of showers and bathrooms for the entire force. And, you know, there's, there's probably time to evaluate that and see if that's appropriate. The third is, discussed, talked about truck storage. And I think that, in my mind, that's something that is still kind of an open issue, relative to what is the volume of truck storage? And I know the chief has his ideas, and I think we should, you know, evaluate those and weigh in on what, what would, do we need to store in the facility? And obviously, what the facility's gonna be used for as far as, but that goes into the fourth kind of reason, rationale behind this, and that's the workforce attraction and retention. So attracting firefighters to the force and retaining them. And the chief has told us how that is becoming more difficult, and he's looking out kind of over the next five to ten years and trying to evaluate, how do we keep an on-call fire department? Now, we could back up even further and say, do we need an on-call fire department at all? But I think that we have kind of settled that at this point in time, and said, we want to keep that, it's, it's in part of Carlisle's fabric, and we are the only, you know, group around, and we, the only town in, in the area that does that. So, I think that those are kind of the, the underlying reasons why we're attempting to do this. Now, are there any other thoughts on this?
Yeah, I mean, I think it's a good summary. I, I believe that items one, two, and four are kind of all of a part, right?
Health and safety, gender parity, parity and what's four, in your mind?
Workforce attraction.
Yeah, I mean.
Workforce.
They want to feel like it's healthy, they want to make sure there's equity. I mean, those are, they're all pieces of the same workforce. So there's the, kind of to cut it a slightly different way, they're the, they're sort of the hard requirements of the operation of the fire department, and then they're kind of the more holistic, maybe, some of them, including safety, might be in that bucket. But there's things you have to do, like to get to operate a modern fire station.
Right.
And there's other things that would be good to do for the broader goal, like you say. My question, I guess, is maybe for Brian, is, did you, have you surveyed comp towns around Commonwealth or New England who are of similar size maybe and have on-call departments? And what are they doing to facilitate now?
To an extent, it's more futuristic to things that I've seen. Like I said, one of the things that's different about us, in terms of not having, in terms of kind of the equipment we have and the number of people we need, is a little bit different, in that we don't have towns around us that can necessarily help us within a short period of time, in terms of large supply. So that's a, a bit different. Other than that, most of the towns that are more like us have three to four full timers, so that's a little bit different. I think, you know, what, one of the things we just don't have is any office space of any kind. There's my office, and that's it. So that kind of space, that, another thing I will mention that has changed since the last time I talked to you, you've asked us several, me several times what the requirements are legally, and I've always said, there are NFPA standards, but you can choose not to meet them. That will change in the next couple of years. So what has happened is OSHA has taken the NFPA standards and is making them laws. So, some of the things around fitness and facilities and those kinds of things will now become requirements. You know, there are towns around us with, you know, like Foxborough, it's not, it's not pretty. But a lot of those places are just hiring more and more full-time people and per diems to fit in their, their space. There are very few towns that still require people to live as close as we do, to respond. You know, and that's a piece of what we need, is the ability to have people be able to work there, and to, you know, do remote work there, so they can live ten minutes, fifteen minutes away, and still provide us coverage. So, long answer to your question, I don't have specifics. The towns I, you know, the Sherburnes, you know, have much newer facilities, many of them have more than one station. And they have the kinds of things, many of the kinds of things we don't have. There are towns like Foxborough that doesn't. They have the office space and things, but it's, it's not something that would attract anybody, I don't think.
So, when you say Foxborough's not pretty, it's under capacity, I mean, it's under size?
They have some office space, things like that, it is not something, I think, it would be very attractive to anybody to work in.
And the requirement to live, are you also saying, Brian, that if we had a more comfortable work environment, you could say you can live elsewhere as long as you commit to being there on your shift, essentially?
They can be anywhere as long as they can respond within four or five minutes, and we happen to have a place that they can do that.
Okay, I see.
There have been people who come and offer, want to do that, and I show them, you know, here's the kitchen, and here's the tent, and, you know, and, and I don't usually hear from them again. So, my, my guess is that's part of our future, is, is having people who are willing to work remotely and can, can do that.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I think Travis summarized it perfectly.
Nathan, can you speak up a little?
I think that Travis summarized it perfectly. I think that those, those are the four that I would highlight as the priorities. And I think, you know, I do have, you know, I, I do just want to make sure, because it's very, very expensive, that the space that we're creating, what we're putting in that space, it's really important that that's what goes into that space, and that, you know, it just seems like a lot of space, so I just would want to make sure that that was being looked at. But, you know, I think that's, I think that's exactly what we talked about before, and those remain my priorities.
Okay. Barney, do you have any?
I, I think that the health and safety, gender parity, and the recruitment retention of a work, an on-call workforce are key. I do have some questions about the truck storage, not so much, I don't think we should address that, but just about how much space we need for that, what vehicles need to be stored, et cetera. But I, I'm comfortable with those as overarching goals.
And I, I think as part of that too, like, we talk about, you know, the, the attracting workers, and so that's gonna be a whole subset discussion of, what does that mean? Is it a, is it a large room? Is it a break room? Is it, then, how many, if you're gonna have people living there, or the ability to stay overnight, how many beds? Like, those are the types of things that I just think we need to, I, I, as Ryan was saying, the more specificity we can come up with, the better. And rather than just kind of leave it open and say, okay, go to it, I think that's kind of what we should be focused on, is, is really honing in on what, what these are, what the requirements are. Same with the bathrooms too, I mean, what do you need? What is requirement?
I guess one other general comment would be looking at the space that exists now, figuring out how we can modify, renovate, reuse the existing space as, as thoughtfully and efficiently as we can before, or at the same time as considering, okay, do we need extra square, additional square footage? But to really take a hard look at the existing structure, with drawing on people that have more expertise than I certainly do in terms of looking at an existing building and figuring out how you could move things around to accomplish some of these goals, at the same time that you're then also understanding, okay, what, what additional square footage are we gonna need to accomplish these goals?
Are you saying that just to ease some of the stress now, or as a potential, it is the long-term solution?
You say more, I'm not sure I follow your question.
You're saying to kind of relook at the, the current building and its layout and everything, is your, is your, I just wanted to make sure I understand what the goal of that was. Is it to, is it to ease the transition period, or is it with a hope of not needing additional square footage in the future?
My hope would be that we don't need as much additional square footage. When you say in the future, meaning?
This project.
This project that we're talking about.
Yeah.
Yeah. I, I, I would hope, I would love it if we could figure out a way to reuse what, the space that we have in such a way that we, we minimize how much additional square footage we actually need to add to the building, or, or in a, in a, you know, annex.
I, I thought we had done that, so maybe I'm just mistaken. That's, that's where we got the current design, right?
Well, we didn't, I mean, it's Brian's design, right?
We have, yeah, I mean, but.
There is a design on the table, but I don't, I think to Travis.
We put together a task force though, to take a look at this.
That was my question, did we?
Well, the design committee.
That was to, to, to look at the safety facilities, and to discuss both fire and police, and looking at the options, whether, I mean, the T-SAC, right, or, no, what was it called? Anyway, yes.
Public safety, renovation, yes, yes.
We need to split it.
They came back with, don't combine it.
Right.
Right.
We need to work on the fire department, and we're gonna need a separate building.
That's correct.
That's as far as they went, right?
We have.
Right.
We do have a back-of-the-napkin envelope plan from the chief, but we don't have a designed plan.
Yeah, so that was really what I wanted to circle back on Travis's points. And maybe ask Julie, Julie, you put together kind of a process document, where, as I recall, there would be a design committee or something, right?
It feels like a lifetime ago.
Yeah.
I don't want to misspeak, but yeah, I mean, I do think it included something like that, and I don't know that you would necessarily want to stick to that same process.
Well, I'm not advocating whether we stick to it or not, but, I mean, I think it gets to a process of, do we cogitate those larger goals, and then we deputize, or do we, you know, I mean, I'd be curious as to people's thoughts.
We've got a certain, I think we need to bring Ryan back in again. We got, we had a design selection committee who invited a lot of architects to come in, and then there was, could you tell us more, Ryan, I want to do it firsthand.
But the, the way the board left it the last time was, the chief created a design that was pared down from the Public Safety Facilities Task Force, original thoughts on programming. So it was the chief's best effort to limit the program and the cost, which I think for a napkin was a pretty strong original design. And the idea was, can we bring in a, a designer or an architect to see if that was feasible, the annexed design? What we got with the designer selection committee, and I'm like oiling down a bunch of work, was more of the same idea, that we can build you a fire station that would meet your programming needs, but it, to, to me, and then in discussions with you, it, it didn't solve some of your goals and other problems, which was, we'd like you to design this annex in this building specifically, it just wasn't specific enough to that. So that made us feel that we should do this goal session again, and then really focus on narrowing down the scope so that your, whoever you pick for the design, or the conceptual design, or an OPM could hone into your design and not what the architect wanted to design, because we thought that might be more costly, and/or not meet your goals or your vision.
I guess I just.
Go, go, go.
They were not necessarily told they would build an annex, an envelope, of this kind of thing, so.
Many of them were not.
I disagree a little bit, but.
Well, many of them were not in order, yes, they were not coming back with that as an idea.
So, this is going to be an expensive project, right?
Well, around ten million.
I guess.
Possibly eight to ten million.
I guess I would say that, you know, not, not to, you know, be too harsh on us, but we do a lot of starting and stopping and starting and stopping, and the price just keeps going up because time keeps going by. I think it would really behoove us to hire an OPM, who is really gonna help us drive this through, and understands what we want, and they own it, and, well, we own it, but they, they're making it happen, and they're holding us accountable to be making decisions and, and to be sticking with our decisions. So I would, I would, I would vote for that.
What's the approximate cost of that?
You're gonna need an OPM anyway.
Right.
So it'll be the cost of gathering a conceptual design plus the management of that, and then what your OPM would cost anyway. So my guess would be fifty to a hundred thousand for an OPM.
And the, oh, go ahead. What I was just gonna say, I think one advantage of an OPM is that, you know, we receive a lot of this information, and we don't really quite know what to do with it, because none of us are architects, and, and we.
And we're not doing it full-time.
And we're not doing it full-time, and it would, I think it would be easier to trust that information.
Yeah, I don't disagree, I, I mean, I, I think it's all, the points are very good. So, but, timing-wise, you mentioned do that at like now, kind of thing, does, wouldn't that have to be authorized by, don't we have to budget for it, I guess? And would that require either retooling the current proposed budget or a separate article?
What do we have in, in ARPA?
I would suggest that you use ARPA.
Do we have enough cash?
I think we, well, we'll know soon, I forgot how much we have, but I think we just got some. I forgot how much we have, but I think we just got some money back from something else that didn't get used.
And so that's a good.
I think we could find, find the money.
Makes sense to me.
Yeah, we could use.
I think it would be an excellent resource.
I think it would save us money.
I, I agree. I think it would save us money.
Have, Ryan, have you had experience working with an OPM on a project? In the way that we're talking about having them help us on the very front end?
It's different, but when you do an MSBA project, which is a school building project, which I know Carlisle's done and some of you were involved in, they require you to hire an OPM upfront and then they help you hire the design firm. So it's kind of all like rigged, but it would be very similar. The same, the same caution, I give you the same caution that I, that I would in either scenario is you have to trust your OPM because they might come to you and say, and I'm just being hyperbolic on purpose, but this is going to cost you 25 million no matter what. And you can't tell them like, no, it needs to be 12, right? Like, you need to hire the type of person that you're going to say, okay, they're saying this is what it's going to cost and that's what it's going to cost. And you do that by setting your goals and your, your budget upfront. So you're hiring an OPM that wants to do that type of project and doesn't guide you to their contacts that want to build something else. If you hire the right OPM, they'll have known what you want and they'll bring in the people that would do your project. But, you know, you've got to trust someone. Right now, the OPMs are me, Julie, and the chief. And we don't have, we have our expertise in our areas, but it's not enough to convince you to go forward with a project. So you need to bring in someone that can.
And I, and I'm assuming that there are people in the world in Massachusetts that do this for a living and that we would be able to find some good candidates.
Most architects would want to be your final design firm because there's more money in that, but there are plenty who would, who would take the smaller project management goal from, and run with it. And there's some that just do that.
Without, and able to do it without trying to steer you toward hiring their firm for the actual project.
If you're very clear with your goals upfront, you won't attract a firm that.
Is trying to do that.
Yeah, there's firms that are just OPMs, right?
Yeah.
You want somebody who doesn't have a dog in the hunt.
Right, that's what I'm getting at.
There's OPMs that want to do big public safety complexes and there's OPMs that, I would call them scrappier OPMs who work with smaller towns that want to.
Uh huh, okay.
Put together a nice, but, you know, cheaper building.
Aren't trying to do the huge, big bells and whistles, get on the front page of Architectural Digest.
That's exactly right.
And we want back.
You do, but.
Yeah.
You know, they're not going to have the same, you know, portfolio.
Yeah.
Which, which the bigger architects would attract you because of their qualifications and their portfolio.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, you're going to have to have some trust in a smaller firm.
But as Ryan's pointing out, the budget of it is something that we need to figure out upfront if we go this direction.
We've got to give.
The budget of the OPM or the budget of the project?
Of the project.
To give it as part of the scope of the, what we're doing.
So you attract somebody who is ready to work with you to meet that budget?
Right, and they, they may come back and say, it's 25 million dollars no matter what. And so we would have to evaluate that. And if we don't think that's acceptable, then either shrink the project or do something else.
Yeah, yeah.
It's not going to be 25 million, by the way.
No, no.
That's hypothetical.
Yes, hyperbolic.
24.
I, I see that Tom Bellott is here, who was on the Designer Selection Committee. And I, Tom, I wonder if you would feel comfortable commenting on your thoughts about the OPM versus the RFQ process?
Yeah, my honest belief is that if we go that way, we'll be in the same place we are right now one year from now. You know, if you look at the work that's been done to date, both by TBA and by Robert's, kind of two ends of the spectrum, one which is a minimalist approach, one which is a maximalist approach. And then Chief Sauer is trying to get a floor plan in between those two. If I had 100,000 dollars I was going to spend, I would commission three actual design studies. One for HK's structural steel integrated building approach, one for an annex with the contract interest in doing that, which we had in the seven, I believe. And I'd also commission Triumph Modular to do a modular approach, get those three real designs done, meeting the chief's program requirements as indicated by his napkin, if you will, and the work done by Robert's. And a year in, before next town meeting, I think we can have one of those to select from. Go to town meeting and say, hey, here's three real designs we looked at. This is the one that's most economic or best value, whatever. And can we do that? I honestly believe, the problem with the OPM is, if you get the right guy, great. But it's just as probably you're going to get the wrong guy and we're going to be sitting here a year from now and he's going to say it's 20 million dollars. And I don't care what we say now, I'm not going to believe 20 million dollars because I know it can be done for less. So I know where you folks will be out of that. But to me, that's a recipe for a delay, honestly. That's my thought.
Julie, do you have a, a comment on this?
Not really.
Okay.
Kind of agree with everything appearing.
I mean, can interview some firms and see what, whether you like them. Tom makes a good point, but I don't, but I think the other, the other side is we don't have the internal expertise.
To what? To get three proposals?
To evaluate.
To get three proposals?
Well, we could get three, that we have the, we have the expertise to RFP anything.
Well.
To evaluate what comes back is the hard part, right?
Could we not ask the OPM to do that research for us on the three different?
Approaches or?
Approaches.
I think that's exactly it. I mean, I think we're asking the OPM to do the work that we're asking the three in this row to do now. And, but we have so many other things that we also want them to do.
Yeah.
But we want this to be moving forward quickly. So, Tom, I understand completely what you're saying. I, I see this as something that is going to propel it forward faster.
Sure.
Yeah, I agree.
Also, when I talk to OPMs, it is their belief that they figure out kind of where you want to go and they find the right people. In other words, I don't necessarily know the architects that will do a 10 million dollar building. I know, I can tell you architects that make really good buildings. I can tell you architects that have been made not. But, but that's what I believe that some of the expertise of the OPMs can give you is they will go to get these designs from the people that will give you, are more likely to give you the designs that you're looking for in the range you're looking for. But that's true or not, that's, that's what they believe. That's what some of them are talking.
I do like Tom's point about though getting, even defining it with like a modular option in a, you know, stick, I don't know, stick build or however we do want to describe the, and then what an annex option? Or is it also, you know, to Barney's point about reusing the structure, I think one of the things we're talking about is looking at, you know, could you use the existing structure and build on top of it or something like that? But we've, I think we've investigated.
We've ruled that out, yeah.
We ruled that out.
Wasn't, well, doesn't meet, doesn't meet the.
It hasn't been ruled out.
No?
No, I don't think it was ruled out.
Okay.
Yeah, and I don't think that we're, with an OPM, we're not starting over.
No.
We still have these things. We still have these ideas. We're still going through them with the OPM.
Yeah.
And saying, okay.
But you're spending 200K then, because if that OPM says commission three design studies, it's 100K for him and 100K for three studies. So it is more money. Maybe worth it, but.
Really having an expert to, to guide us and as you said, take away, take the, because otherwise we have Ryan and Julie and the chief basically spending their time doing it and they're trying to do a lot of other things for us. So it's trying to get the resources.
Right.
And then when they come back to us, we, we sniff around it because we're not sure that we, you know, we, of the results. And that's not fair to them.
Yeah, right, Tom. I think the way I would frame what you said is it's prudent to, I don't know if the number's two or three, but it's prudent to have a couple of different design approaches based on what we're thinking. So that 100,000 or whatever it costs, we do whether we have an OPM or not. So the issue is really, does an OPM, which may represent, let's say, 1% of the cost of the project, is it worth spending 1% for a guy that potentially could save you 10%, 20%?
If you get the right guy, absolutely yes.
Right, okay. So it's not like 100%. The first 100 to get architects to work designs is probably regardless. And then we're back to, will an expert help save us money in the long run? I think we feel, yeah.
Yeah. And the, you know, what I'm hearing that is definitely makes a lot of sense to me is that we don't have the expertise on our, among our town staff. We're not, we're, don't, wouldn't expect to have it, given the nature of the work that everybody's doing in terms of our town staff. So we're looking for somebody that has that expertise, that has that experience, that has those qualifications, that's going to, right, help, help guide us in the right direction. So we're making good, smart choices based on.
And keep us moving forward.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So I, I support the idea of, of an OPM. And I, I think it just, to Tom's point, just really do our best due diligence to make sure we, you know, end up with a couple of candidates that really do understand what it is we're looking for and that we think can do a good job for us before choosing. So we maximize the chances of getting somebody good that'll do what we want.
If we go this route, I think then for effectiveness, it might make sense to have our town administrator, you know, run that process and for us and come up with a couple of candidates that we look at? Or do we trust that?
I think we, I think, just to shield Ryan, I think it should be our decision and we hire this, we choose this person and we commit to trusting that person. And we, we all trust Ryan, there's no question about that.
I'm saying about multiple candidates and then bring them in and then bring them in and have the select board make that decision.
Absolutely.
This is an RFP, so we'd certainly have to narrow it down. But I do agree that you have to trust this person. This is basically going to be a staff member for you for, for this project, so.
Right. Yeah.
Us and the, you know, and the chief, obviously. Yeah.
So do we, what do we need to do today?
So I think, I think it would be nice if we just make a decision that we're going to go with the.
Do that as a motion?
Yes.
You can go with an OPM.
I go with an O and then.
So we're going to RFP for an OPM?
Yes.
We can, we can bring you a.
PDQ, yeah.
We can bring you a sample. We, we have that direction. You still need to talk about cost, programming.
Yeah, yeah.
Good. So, but that's one decision we've made, right?
Okay.
You know what? Just for peace of mind, could we have a motion?
Well, do you want to combine it?
So that's in.
Do you want to combine it with what we decide around the cost? We've got goals, right, but.
Okay, fine.
And then we just do one.
I just want it.
Yeah, make a formal decision.
Formal, so that we can go back to the tape.
Yes.
Yes, we made that decision and that's the way we're going. And nobody gets to flip-flop after that.
Yes.
Okay. All right. So cost. I would say that we learned, I think, we learned at Triumph that it's possible to do this in the 10 million dollar range.
Triumph is a, is a modular company that Julie had contacted. They had built a, it's kind of similar, different in some ways, a fire department annex in Chelmsford where it was an existing building and they attached modular structure to it, sort of a unified way. It's not quite the exact same project, but an example. We went there and they did a presentation on, on their capabilities, not our project. So in many cases, they, what we learned is they designed something for you and then you go out for an RFP and they can kind of serve. You still need an OPM and they didn't quite understand that, but. Or they can take your design and give you, give you some options. It's, it's a option, it's not the only way. But anyways, for people who don't know what Triumph is, that's what they do.
So the, we might say to this OPM, once we hire somebody, that we want them to include as one of the things they're looking at, a modular, somebody to propose a modular approach to this project, right?
Yes.
Yes.
It's one of, yeah. And you're saying that what you learned with the 10 million is not out of.
Well, they actually have a limit, the modular has a limit of what, eight?
7.5.
7.5 million. So they can't.
Why is that?
Yeah.
Because of DCAM.
You need to have a DCAM certification and it has values.
What is DCAM?
Decontamination?
No, Department, Division of Capital Asset Management.
Yeah, for the state.
For the state.
So you have to, you have to have done projects like this and received a certification. So their cap is 7.5 million dollar projects. And I think they're the top in the area. So they can't do a 10 million dollar building.
So you can't do larger projects till you've done a larger project? You can't do larger projects till you've done.
The government.
Yes, yes, yes.
Yeah, nice catch 22.
You can just look at it the other way. I, I have a hard time visualizing, okay, well, I think it could be this much money or I could think it could be this much money. Do you have a way where you could show us, like, what is the impact of our budget? I know that you do because if, if we were to say 10 million dollars, what are we committing to our residents to? If we were to say 15 million dollars, what are we giving our residents to? And that way we can understand.
Yeah.
How big a basket are we really talking about when we're talking about these numbers? Sorry to put you on the spot.
Yeah, just give me one second.
Yeah.
So just to go back to this Triumph modular for a minute. So the, the project could entail spending a certain amount of money on the current building to renovate it, rehab it, whatever.
And possibly.
And then, and then a separate modular structure. It, just as a, for example, right, that would be capped at 7.5 million for its cost. And could be less than.
7.5 million include the site costs and OPM costs and other stuff? So they can't, 7.5 is the total project cost?
Yeah. But they suggested they could either just do a two-story modular that somewhat like Chief's back-of-the-envelope deal, you know? Or they could look into, you know, what's the word? Stabilizing the, the current building, you know, putting in more beams and things like that.
To allow to build on top?
And popping another thing on top.
Huh, okay.
The, the project that they have done recently and that they touted is the Chelmsford Fire Station. And that was an original building built, I don't know, in the 50s, I think it was. And they retrofitted some of the building. They encountered some foundation issues that they had to do as part of their site work. But then they made an addition to it that it has brick and they tried to match the brick as best they could.
This is the Chelmsford one?
This is the Chelmsford one. But the, the addition is all modular and it, and it provided many of the things that we're looking for.
Why are we getting prescriptive? I mean, I think.
I just wanted to understand more what the modular option is being, that's all.
Modular, modular, the thing it can offer is that it's built off-site and that it can be delivered at a faster time.
I understand that. I guess the OPM would, that would be an option.
Right.
That's exactly right.
And there are some cost savings that may come with.
I think, rolling back into, if we're trying, as I understand this discussion, we want to bring in OPMs, give them some kind of bullet list of our main criteria, as you've outlined, and a, a working budget figure.
Yes.
Correct.
Not the limit is this.
Right.
Yeah, I think this, a target.
But this, this came about, I think, just in saying, okay, we had said 10 million dollars. Is that even reasonable?
Yeah.
Well, yes, it is reasonable.
It's reasonable for that approach.
We, we saw something in Chelmsford that was this technology that would be 7.5 million. So we're not out of the ballpark.
Sure.
Yeah.
It's just a sanity check.
Well, and the OPMs may say you are out of the ballpark.
They might, they might.
They might, so, so what? But we feel.
We'll find out.
So really the question for us, yeah, no, the question for us, I think tonight is, do we feel comfortable budget-wise with 10 million? do we feel comfortable budget-wise with 10 million?
Well, and right now we're treading water, trying to give Ryan a chance to get his tools up.
All right, so assumptions, which you guys love, 30-year borrow of 4%, of 5 million, so per 5 million, it's $183 on the current tax bill. So, to put that in perspective, it's a little more than a 1% increase on the average tax bill.
You'd say 360, or if it's 10 million?
1% per 5 million.
10 million would be $366 per year in a declining way for 30 years on the average tax bill, which is a little more than 2%.
Right.
So, that is 2/3 of what you've authorized this year for the operating budget.
Yes.
For the contest.
Just for the project.
Or, to put it another way, if we're in a 2% budget year, it would be a 5% increase. 3% would be a 6%.
And what was the household number again? That you've reduced it to the household again, what?
Per household?
Yeah.
Per annual, annually in the first year?
For the 5 million.
It would be $183 per 5 million.
So, you need to double it though.
Right, cause it's 10 million. I can do that math.
And the average tax bill is what now?
16. I'm rounding everyone. I can round if you want.
And 3, 6, 2, 4 is what percentage of?
Well, you said it's 2%.
That's right, 2%.
2%. So, that's why I say if people are sensitive, if we are somewhat sensitive to percent increases, the 3% operating line becomes a 6%.
Yes. Well, and we did show that, by the way, in our.
Right, that's right.
And we do have that in our capacity, in our 2 and 1/2, you know.
Well, to roll it back to what John, you know, John shows us, I'm not sure exactly all his numbers, but he shows a 30, you know, you can quibble with the details, but he shows a $30 million need and, you know, again, plus or minus, but let's just say that's an accurate number. So, a third of it, he overestimates the police, he underestimates fire, but say a third of his 30 million would go to this. And, you know, is that a reasonable thing? Probably.
Yeah.
And then this little chart that's.
Don't forget, he does not have anything for the DPW in here.
No, he does.
Oh, yeah, he does.
What things in there?
That's why I say you can, you can, you can quibble with the details, but he's not, I think he's in the ballpark of, you know.
We're gonna have to figure this out. I wouldn't necessarily take this.
No, 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 but I mean, he happened to bring it and I, you know, I mean, I think we're gonna hear now about pretty big capital expense on roads that it sounds like.
Yes.
Ryan's figured out a way to pay it out of cash. So, that's a good thing, right?
That's great.
Okay.
But so, back to the.
Back to the number, the total number, or the but, the working budget, maybe we wanna call that.
I'm okay with that.
Are you okay with 10? Are you okay with 12?
I mean, the concern I always have about, you know, whenever you get into these situations, you say, okay, well, what might we be able to do? Okay, if it's $10 million, well, that's what it's gonna be, right?
Self-fulfilling profit.
It's a self, exactly. And so, you know, I feel, you know, we wanna do it right, right? And I don't know, is $10 million reasonable? I don't know, but it seems like it's, it's something I would support. We just did $3 million and just a minor renovation.
As Mason said to Dixon, we've got to draw the lines some.
Lots of references tonight.
Yeah, right.
Want me to sing my song?
No.
Okay.
Is that you?
Well, and there's nothing that's, if we find a good, if we hire a big OPM. I mean, I understand exactly what you're saying, Nathan, if we settle, if we have a number out there that is, you know, sort of drives toward that number, but looking for options that would be less than 10 million.
Sure.
Right.
If we interview three OPMs and we ask them, that costs us zero, right? Here's our list. What do you think?
Working budget.
See what those people come back with.
Do we need to further define this list? And maybe not tonight.
The goals or the?
Yeah, it should be a little crisper.
And a little crisper as far as, you know, what we think are some of the criteria or, like, cause again, I, the number of trucks that are storage and there are reasons for it, which the chief has talked about, where, you know, the water truck you can't use in the winter because it's frozen and if we keep it inside will give us more capacity. That, you know, seems like a logical thing, but maybe, I don't know what, you know, what's the right thing. I know that they have to take the bumper off one of the ambulances now and that's not the right thing, so.
You know, it's, they're really good at it, though.
But I mean, if we, I think we've given enough guidance that these three, the de facto OPM right now could probably come back to us with a refined, I think.
With a draft that has.
Well, I, I think you still have to have that working budget number.
Yeah.
Oh, no, we'll do that. We'll do that.
Yeah.
But I'm saying, on our, do you have enough to kinda do a draft?
Like, we could bring you a draft. It's, what I'm trying to avoid and perfectionist, I don't know what you wanna call, but there will be a second round of, of second guessing with this project, right? Like, it's 500 square feet too big or you should've cut that or you should've cut this. And I really just think you should think about defending that argument now. So, if it's you that are gonna make that argument, you should settle that upfront and just let the OPM know, like, this is the size of the building that we want, this is the programming we want and not, not cut down the designs that come in after they're created. So, really just look, so if you're gonna say, like, you can't have more than 10 trucks or I won't support it, then do that discussion now. And I'm not saying that's the number, cause I can see the chief staring at me. The, just have it out now so the, the OPM knows your unified vision for this building and then whatever comes back to you, you're gonna trust more. So, if they say, you know, you just can't do it for less than 11 vehicles, then, then that's, you know, that's what it's, what it is.
So, I'll put it out there on the table, my concerns about the trucks. So, you know, we have a lot of medicals, you know, we now have two ambulances, we absolutely need to have two ambulances inside. We have water issues, you know, we have the old, the old pumper, the old tanker, the new tanker. I think those should be inside. I think the antique vehicles, it's really, really expensive space for that. I could, but I could be convinced if it was part of a longer-term plan that based upon what we knew for growth in the town or something like that, that we would be able to remove those trucks and use that for the growth. Rather than in the future, we need more space because we still have the antique vehicles and, but we also have the growth. So, that's, that's kinda how I feel about it, you know. I don't wanna, I don't wanna cut it really, really close so that, you know, that's what we did last time, what I think was designed so we could build on it, but it's still, much time has gone by and, you know, everything's changed and so we can't do that. You know, we don't, we don't wanna get into that situation again either. But what jumps out at me is, you know, very expensive per square footage, I don't know, do they do cubic footmen, is that kinda thing? But anyway, per square footage, building and we're putting the antique vehicles in it. That seems to me a little bit of overkill unless, unless there's a bigger plan that I could be convinced of. But absolutely, we should have our two tanks, tankers in, it's, you shouldn't have one outside empty, right? If we're gonna keep it and maintain it, it should be usable. We don't have fires only in the summertime, as you know. And I fully support, as you know, two, two ambulances.
How many antique trucks do we have?
Two.
So, one thing about having base space, part of that is for training. We do not have a training building and that is a piece of why you have the space. Training and the flexibility to do things and repair things and move around in the building and all of that. Part of that is driven by what you need upstairs. So, you need that space upstairs and so you build something with the space upstairs. I think you're right that that is your expansion space, because if you build something that's only exactly what you have now, you're constrained in the future and that is obviously your expansion space. But it's also your space that you train in, it's your space that you do all the things that we don't have, not having that.
Yeah, so I think I would just, I would just think it'd be great if that, expansion space was tied to the numbers. You know, it's like John would be expecting. It is tied to what we think the growth is gonna be.
Yeah. And we still have $100,000 worth of tents there, too.
So, for.
Thank you for using it, by the way.
Yes.
So, we can, we can bring you, the staff can bring you a draft for an OPM.
Yes.
Remaining decision points and maybe some funding options for next discussion.
Okay.
We should do that soon.
All right.
All right.
And we'll also be adding another voice to this board, so.
Just one comment on the budget. What I'm hearing is that there may be some options out there that are less expensive, that would meet our needs and we don't know that really till we ask and get the proposals, but. So, I guess I'd be more comfortable saying in the 5 to 10 million dollar range, rather than saying 10 million. Because I think we wanna send the message that we are looking for something that meets our goals, but we also are very, very cost-conscious and.
I like that.
I'll open that out there.
I worry, I, I don't disagree with you at all. I totally, you know, that's basically your stating what I started off with. But my concern on the other side is our ability to attract OPMs to, to wanna bid on it. And so, if you think of what we're trying to do and we're spending probably $3 million on a police station, $2 million on a police station.
Three.
$3 million on a police station and you're, I, I don't think we're gonna come anywhere near $5 million on the fire, the fire station.
Yeah, it's a lot more.
How about not to exceed 10 million? But I, anyway.
I mean, you could do 7.5 to 10.
I really feel like.
The five is dropping off.
Well, I think she said 5 to 10.
I think you're.
She can say 7 to 10.
Oh, 7.5 to 10.
Yeah, I know, but I think you're overthinking that the OPMs are gonna game this. Like, if, that's why I say if you, at the competitive level, when the OPMs are vying for the project, they're selling us on them. I totally agree with Nathan. If it's too low, they're like, I'm being set up for failure, I'm not taking that one. If we say, you know, budgetary estimate for us is 10 million, but we want your input, we have a discussion again. The discussion with the three people we down-select costs us zero. We're not paying them, they're pitching us. We can see, they'll say, oh, you know, that's, that's way too little or I can work with that. I mean, we'll get a sense. Then when you finally pick the OPM, then you have a serious discussion about what you're saying. But I think in the beginning, I think you're, I believe you're overweighting that they're gonna, you know, suddenly design the. I just think we gotta give them our thinking and test to see, are we crazy? Or is that like in the ballpark, right?
And that's why I actually like the 5 to 10, cause I do. I think that's, and I, I think, you know, Tom was on the committee and there were a myriad of architects who, and one of them actually threw out some numbers and we, of a $6 million number. All right. But, but I say that and it wasn't vetted and there was a lot of question whether that could even be feasible. But, you know, there's a professional architect who put, put a stake in the ground and said, no, I think that this is what, you know. That's why I think, I think having a band just kinda might be helpful.
Does it have to be that big a band of what, about 7.5 to 10 million? I'm just.
Yeah.
Sure. I think you should all think about it for our next discussion.
Great, okay.
Great, thank you, Ryan.
But you want us to take a motion, just that we're going with an OPM?
I still would like to have an, yes.
Okay.
A draft.
And we, and start, go ahead and start your draft. Yeah, so go ahead and make your motion.
All right, so I move that we approve hiring an OPM to work on the fire station renovation project.
Okay.
And, and have our town administrator.
Run the process.
Run the process and bring several candidates back to the board for consideration.
I actually thought we were gonna review the document first.
We will.
Before he even brings them back. You're just, you're making a motion for like the process.
Just the OP, yeah, just for the, the hiring of an OPM.
Start the process.
Start the process.
Yeah, is that okay?
Yeah, yeah, just I wanna make sure he's not running, when you said he runs with it, like, he's gonna bring in three candidates in next week.
Our station will be built by September.
Really?
Okay, so I have a motion in a second. We're definitely going with the OPM. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Hi.
Great.
Madam Chair, before we move to the next late-breaking news. Cause I said that Betsy said I could sign on behalf of the committee and list them and then tonight she said to me, well, actually, if only you sign, it's only you that's signing. So, if we want the whole committee to be listed as signing, we all have to sign.
It can't say Kate Reed on behalf of the select board and list the people underneath.
She can say that, but they can't know, that's what I did, that's what I did and I thought it was okay and now suddenly it's not.
I prefer to list everyone and I think there's time before Monday.
There's plenty of time.
We could circulate.
Well, all you have to do, I think, is take a picture.
You could do a docu-sign, Kate.
Yeah.
You could do a docu-sign, so you guys figure it out. Okay, great. I just wanna make sure I don't forget that.
Late-breaking news.
Well, I'll see.
I'm glad that you checked that.
Well, I didn't check it. I mean, I was under an impression and then tonight she's like, oh, wait.
Great. Ryan, two-year road maintenance plan.
Another small budget item.
Thank you, Tom.
Thanks, Tom.
Bye-bye, Tom.
You should fly through this, huh?
Yeah, that's a little easy. So, the.
No, there's a few bumps in the road.
Man, you guys are.
No, I tell ya.
Road maintenance, each.
All right, so this is born of a couple things. So, we do annual road maintenance. This is not new. What is new is trying to make this more, more policy and process-driven decision-making, include it in the capital plan and kind of vet out our public, our recommendation for a public process. So, we did hire and it's in your packet, a consultant to go over the roads. You remember that report? They talked about in order to keep our roads the way they are in Carlisle, you would need to invest about $500,000 a year. This is a reaction to that, doing a two-year road maintenance plan. This would allow us to bid this for the next two years and then we would work on extending this plan to a, to a five-year plan and then hopefully a 10-year plan and mesh it with the capital plan. Also included in this recommendation is the idea that you would hold a public hearing as part of an annual process in order for people to come and to grieve their road and discuss with you.
Grieve him.
The problems with their road. So, we don't mind taking this to staff and we'd certainly do that, but people are pretty passionate about their roads and it can change your mind and you, and you should hear it, I think.
Yeah.
It's not, you know, every time we go and visit someone's road, we think to ourselves, okay, I wouldn't wanna drive down this, this road either, right? But there's also limited resources and you have to prioritize just like capital. So, I think that's, if you publish a list and you allow people to speak about it, they're still gonna be unhappy that their road's not tomorrow, but it does make the public feel better about the plan.
Right, okay.
So, that's just a little context. So, here is Jim and I's draft plan for your comment. If this was approved now at our future meeting, then it would go out to bid and we would execute the 2024 plan. It doesn't mean that '25 is locked in, but it does allow us to secure a better price if we do it over two years. So, the agenda for this is to discuss a maintenance strategy, go over currently available funds, you understand the budget and context, provide a two-year expense recommendation, so that's the actual plan, financing strategy, and then the next steps. So, as you know, the town engineer has recommended a $500,000 per year investment. They included full paving projects, is what people recognize as my road is now looks new. There's many different applications there and I won't get into the science, but that's what I mean by full paving projects. And then maintenance, which is smaller, it can be up to paving and as low as crack ceiling or everybody knows those strips that go on the road. So, the reason for that is water gets in cracks, deteriorates spaces and then the more the base deteriorates, the larger the cost of the project. So, if you can prevent that for longer, you can make your roads last. And you also directed us to include what we're calling parity roads to address long neglected neighborhoods and bring to recommendations of people that are, I won't say complaining, but are bringing up that their roads are bad. And we tried to connect these red roads, if you remember the map, to projects in order to make it cost-efficient, but also address problems. So, available funds, Carlisle primarily does this road maintenance through the Chapter 90 program, okay? And you will need to supplement this in order to, to maintain a 500,000-plus inflation strategy. So, the current reserves are 775,000, so this is money that was not spent in previous years that we have available now that's not dedicated to a current project. The 25 allotment per the $200 million state bond bill is 254,000 and we know for sure that we just got an additional 116,000 through the state's rural roadways program. So, that is known money for a total available FY25 pot of 1.145 million. Potential resources, so there still is a pending state bond bill for fair share money, which last year netted us 170,000. And then this plan is also FY26, so that allotment should come in at around 254,000 unless they change the formula, which means there's another 420,000 pending for what we're estimating to be somewhere in the vicinity of 1.565 million.
That would be for, actually, for that year, so the two-year total is 2.6.
No, no, no. That's the two-year total, 1.565.
Oh, okay.
But half of it, Kate, is a backlog we haven't spent. It's like a free cash. It's the free. the free cash of Chapter 90.
Yes.
And I understood the potential. What are those, where are those?
So we, the 26 money hasn't been approved yet.
Okay.
And neither has the Fair Share Act. So we always get some Chapter 90. So of that 420, I would say.
At least 250.
250 is guaranteed, and we're hoping for the 170.
Okay.
But Fair Share Act looks like it's a possibility. We've long been advocating that the state does the $300 million bond bill, which would equal about $400,000 a year for Carlisle. And we think that under the current governor, that that will be a, that will be likely. They haven't increased Chapter 90 allotment in 10 years, so it's way behind inflation.
So with this, this number, the 1.5, that covers more than the two years, assuming we had all this. That covers the 500,000 per year for FY25 and 26?
Yes and no. Stay tuned.
Okay.
Okay, so the, the 2024 maintenance plan includes Church Street, Proctor Street, Prospect Street, and River Road. So these prioritizations came from the NITCH road study and analysis from the Department of Public Works. So the DPW records resident complaints and notes problem areas during their annual maintenance projects. And they also identify through their plows. So they hit things a lot in some areas, and they know the bad roads better than most people. They drive them all the time. Very few people know the roads like Jim. He's driven them all and plowed them all. So he can tell you every bad road in town through experience.
I have a question. I think it's Proctor Street and Prospect Street is the one that's at the Carlisle and Concord line?
Yeah.
Okay. So it's the Proctor Street, which is really very short in, in Carlisle. And it's got the two entrances to it. I'm wondering if we wouldn't, so if that makes like double the road, because it's double wide on both sides. What if we just redesigned it and made it a single, you know, real left-hand turn there instead of the old wagon path?
We could.
I mean, it's half, half the length then, you know? I mean, it's short to start with, I know, but I mean, but.
I think that would cost more than this.
It would. Okay.
Redesign, you know, whole process. Is it scenic road?
Have to have town meeting accept it.
Scenic road. I don't know.
I don't think so. It would make your sightlines and safety better, too, because you wouldn't be coming at an angle.
So I would recommend that we put all the roads up one night and then discuss any changes we want to do with roads for, for the longer-term 10-year plans, that we can cost that out for you.
Okay.
So also included in the 24 maintenance plan is an emergency fix of the Westford Road culvert. Any of you have driven on that road, know that both sides are backed up?
Yeah.
The culvert's so bad that when we tried to spray it out, it just disintegrated. And I have a piece in my office, if you want me to bring it down. So the, it looks like a mortar shell, so it fits with my motif. The problem with the Westford Road culvert is we, we do not think it's gonna last the season. So we're discussing as a staff a recommendation to the cons comm, and you to emergency.
Where is the culvert?
Right down there.
Yeah, it's not.
This one right here.
Right down 225, yeah.
We knew it was a problem. We tried to clean it out and, and realized it's even more of a problem than we thought. So you're gonna have sticker shock on this, but the full fix, which will probably take two to three years to design and do based on current stream crossing standards and, and other things we have to do, will be somewhere between three quarters of a million and a million dollars.
For just the culvert?
Yes.
Just the culvert.
The temporary fix.
It's like a little bridge, right? Basically.
It's basically gonna come a bridge. The temporary fix, which would last a couple years, would be in the vicinity of 200 to 500,000, which would give us time to design it properly. Overall, we waited too long on this. Julie has been very proactive in looking at future Westford Road culverts to try and get ahead. This also doesn't preclude us getting a grant to fix this or, or some other saving mechanism, but we have to, we're not gonna have a choice soon. The argument for it being emergency is the public safety aspect and the usage that it has really impacting the town if it was to say, just go, and then we needed to fix it.
I mean, if a heavy truck goes over it, it could just collapse.
I, I don't think it's there, but it's, we also don't think it works. So if we have another rainy season, that's it. So looking ahead to 2025, so paving pro, also in 24 would be some crack ceiling as recommended by the plan. $10,000 worth of crack ceiling.
And the, on paving prob, project, oh, so these are the roads that you do the crack and paving projects on?
Yeah.
The ones out to the right there?
The ones in the pictures, you're gonna do mill and fill, right?
Yes. Yep. And this is the length of road. So it's a total length of road of nearly 16,000 feet. For 25, the recommendation is paving projects again, mill and fill, with a much more robust crack ceiling. And the roads recommended are Baldwin, Pattern, Rogers, Sterns, West, and Woodridge.
Pattern. Where's the pattern?
Patton.
Patton.
It's Patton.
Is that an R? Okay.
Yeah. Oh, Patton, okay.
We'll rename it.
Lane, okay, right.
We'll rename it. 15,000 again in total. So the financing, and take questions on this, I just wanna get through, so you understand the full picture. The financing strategy for this, we took our maintenance projections from all identified projects and added a 10% contingency. So what we did was we took 2024 costs and added it per square foot to the identified projects, plus added the crack ceiling recommendations, and vetted this with NITCH to make sure that we were being reasonable. And then we will bid all projects with alternates, meaning in priority, roads will be added to make sure if the bid goes over, that we can still accomplish the project and have to cut out. So the, we're projecting the Westford Road culvert to be around $500,000, which might be conservative if we do the temporary, and it might be under if we do the permanent fix. The 2024 plan would cost a little over 500,000, and same with the 2025, for a total expenditure of 1.515 million, which leaves us about 50,000 from the numbers that you, that you showed me.
What's the 370 thing?
Expense versus current? What does that mean?
Um, that does, I don't remember now. I apologize.
Okay. But basically, you're gonna spend down the 1.5.
It made a lot of sense to me.
But you're saying, you're essentially saying, burn down our surplus, surplus now.
Yes.
Burn down our surplus to take care of these, you know, immediate needs, which will leave us in the future with the 250 of Chapter 90 plus any add-ons that.
So I remember expense. So what we actually have on hand is expense versus current. The potential is everything we think we're gonna get.
Oh, I see. Okay.
So we're in a deficit if we don't get any Chapter 90 money next.
You got zero, but that's not.
And we don't get the fair share. But we think we're at a $50,000 surplus. That's what that was.
Okay.
So the, to, to David's point, I, I do believe that we will start getting around 400,000 per year, which means we're going to pass this two-year plan, have to add to the capital plan in order to maintain a $500,000 strategy plus inflation.
Right.
So add that to the list. That's not a big whack. If you want to do more roads, and we consider more culverts, and we identify more horizontal construction.
I'm sure we'll find them, yeah.
The cost is going to increase.
Bless you. Well, I think, I mean, go ahead.
Go ahead, Dave.
Well, you know, in there, and the study was really great. I think they did a great job. The, the charts that they have in the study itself, like those lines do indicate that, yeah, the five, well, not the maps also, but even just the simple line charts. Ryan knows how much I like those line charts. The 500,000 a year keeps you right at par in the today dollars, right? So just, you know, it's gonna be more than 500 to stay at par.
When that's.
It's, yeah. Not that crossover chart, but the, I don't know, I can't tell you what page it is in the packet. But it just suggests that 500.
Page 27, 26, in that area.
500 keeps you at par and without inflation. So that's why I'm saying it's, it's more, and the backlog, if you go to the next chart, there's two charts in a row. At the par value, the dollar backlog, and I don't know if this is indexed or not, goes from 9 million of projects to 15 million, right? That's still spending, yeah, that second chart. That one says, in today's dollars, you spend 500 and you stay at a score of 76, which is okay, but it means that there's still some pretty crappy roads out there.
Yes.
And then if you go to the next chart, one page down, that says, okay, and I assume this is indexed for some kind of inflation. The backlog at that spend curve, which is the red dots, goes from 9 million to 15 million. So it's like an OPEB debt grows, right? Yeah. Just, so we bear that in mind. I, I think the plan is great. I'm just saying, there's more to it.
We're not gonna spend 500 every year, is what you're saying.
We're gonna spend down the rainy day fund that we have, which is a good use of it.
Yeah.
But there's gonna be the need for.
But we're always gonna have rainy day.
What?
We're always gonna have rainy day events. This is probably gonna be shocking.
No, exactly. No, 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 totally. That's what I'm saying.
And I think this is, I talked about this the last time we saw this. You know, I worry it's too little. You know, I don't, I don't think we should go out, out of the gate and, you know, say, we're gonna repave more roads, but we're burning our rainy day fund.
Right.
And so if something were to come up, we can't, we can't do it, right?
Well, we would have to tap, you have to tap something.
Yeah. Or, or go to town meeting or something like that. It seems to me like we should be building this up, because, you know, I think that I'm fine with us staying at the 7.6 PCI, which I can't remember what PCI stands for. But, you know, I think.
They've been crappiness index.
That, that, that's probably okay.
Exactly.
But the fact that, the fact that our, kind of, our big-ticket debt is going up and up and up.
Right. It's like an OPEB that you underfund.
It's like an OPEB that you underfund, but it's much more likely to hit you than the OPEB, the OPEB is.
At least in our.
Right, yeah. Yeah.
Yeah. So I mean, so it's a, well, when this, I agree. When the study came out, I was like, ah, cause exactly what you said was in my mind. Like, all right, we're scrapping around for, you know, fire truck for a few hundred thousand. This is gonna be like an extra 500 every year that you're just.
Or more.
Well, let's say you get 400 from the, if you get 400 from the state, we're not the only town affected.
This example, this year alone, the culvert on 225.
Yeah, right.
You know, that, that's in addition to the.
Inventoryting the culverts.
I'm not an engineer. Say that loud.
You know, we, we need to do that 500,000, and we need to do 500,000.
Right. But there'll be, well, let's just say, let's say the ticket's a million with all the contingencies. 400 or 900,000, let's say. 400, I agree with Ryan. It's likely that the state recognizing this across the Commonwealth will up the funds to say 400,000. It still leaves us.
And even $400,000 increase a year is nothing compared to what we might have to do.
Yeah, right. So it's, you know.
$15 million. Obviously, it's not gonna all hit us at once.
No, no, right. No, that's totally right.
But we're getting further and further and further behind.
Well, it means, again, it means that, you know, if John were here, he'd shoot me a glare, but you, you might say, well, gee, the community centers are nice, too. But we gotta have our roads, you know? I mean, those are the kind of decisions that some future elect board.
Sure, sure. Maintaining the status quo at the 500,000 is maintaining the roads where they are now.
Yeah.
But continuing, but acknowledging that they're continuing to deteriorate, other than just the pavement, which is really what they're talking about.
Right, right.
They're, they're continuing to deteriorate, and that, that cost is going from.
Well, let's clarify that. I think the mill and fill redoes the road, right?
And. And not the culverts, right?
No, not the culverts. But the roads, if they're fixed, they don't, they get a fresh life.
So there is enough money in the DPW operating budget to handle small culverts and adjustments to the road that, that make the road last longer and fix some problems. It's these bigger culverts that we really need to inventory. It's one of the variables I discussed when we talked about long-term capital planning, is we really need to identify the bridges and the culverts.
Yeah, yeah.
That are gonna be a problem.
Any idea how many of the big ones we have?
We know of at least two more that are more expensive than Westford Road.
But that are also need to be repaired?
You have to assume everything needs.
Yeah. We need to rebuild that rainy day fund, which is what I'm worried about. We're depleting.
No, you're right. You're 100% right.
But on that topic, then, do we know whether there are culverts within the list of streets that we're talking about doing in, in this calendar year? That we want to make sure we understand what, what those needs are before we pave them, only to find out we have to rip them up, because we have to repair something underneath it?
Yeah. So when, when we do a paving project, we lift up the basins, assess them, do any culvert work, make sure that everything's addressed, and then they, then they pave it.
Uh-huh.
I do believe that Westford Road was intentionally missed the last time it was paved, which.
Because it was too expensive?
Intentionally missed by.
So that's why it's gonna cost so much to fix. You need to do a hydrological study and make sure it's the right size, and otherwise, you know, it'll be another board's problem, but I don't think.
But that's part of the Band-Aid or the later fix?
That's the later fix. We don't have time to do that before it fails.
Right. So there's nothing you can do to shore it up for cheap and then commit to the bigger project?
Well, the, the reason for denying the emergency waiver is that once we do the temporary fix, this generation will say that's good enough. So that'll be the cons com's decision. They have to give the waiver.
Oh, because it's well-ins or what?
Yeah.
Yeah.
But I mean, you're saying they waive it to do the Band-Aid, and then they won't waive it again to do the bigger fix?
Well, you're supposed to fix it right away. It's a Band-Aid. But towns, you know, don't. So for the same cost conversations you're having now.
Yeah. Okay.
My, my, you know, I, I think this is awesome. I, I, you know, this is not going to be for town meetings, and we already have the money. Is that right? We're taking the money from elsewhere?
We have the Chapter 90 money.
We have the Chapter.
Which can only be used for things like this.
Yeah. I think, my preference would be, and I don't know how this would happen, how this would do, if we take this, what we really need to figure out, how to make it 750 a year to get that $500,000 back. And that's just nothing compared to what we need. But at least we get that $500,000 back as quickly as we can and not wait.
You mean rebuild the tank?
Rebuild the tank.
Yeah. No, I agree with that. But I'm still stuck on this spending 500 and then having, for a Band-Aid. It seems like a pretty expensive Band-Aid. If you were to commit to a rebuild, does that mean you have to close that road for a month or something? Or can you route around?
From coming to town.
I'm also not an engineer, but I think it would take two years to get it done.
But, but, right.
To do the full repair.
But, but do you have to close the road or?
It'll eventually close itself.
I know that. But if you're just committing to rebuild, basically building a little bridge, there's no like routing around, right?
There's a detour, yeah.
There's a detour, but.
Well, you'd have to go over.
Yeah, go all the way through curve, through Cross Street. Cross Street to Bingham and back.
So the arguments for fixing it temporarily are public safety.
And convenience.
And, you know, not overloading.
See your point, then nobody, they'll be, good enough is good enough.
Is it, is it, is there an argument for looking at whether we should be doing the full-blown repair now?
Cost.
Cost.
Cost, don't you?
Yeah. But it's gonna, you're saying we'd spend a half a million, and then on top of that, we'd have to spend how much more on, how, how much of that half a million gets wasted when we have to do the final repair?
All of it.
Yeah.
That's why.
Right. So that's my question.
It's the expensive Band-Aid.
Yeah. So.
Well, let.
We'd be look, looking at, and I know it would probably then throw this whole thing out of whack.
There's another question to ask.
Cause you'd have to take some of this surplus that we have.
And you have all these other culverts that have the same issue.
But we know this is, this is the worst one right now.
They're not as bad as this one.
But I'm saying that, that we're gonna have those costs, too, and, you know.
Well, that goes back to Nathan's point, that, you know, we would need a culvert plan, which I think we all agree. I'm, I'm just that, do you, if I were to present you with a five hundred dollar fix on your car, that's really needs a thousand dollars, you'd say, I want the thousand dollar one. Why spend five hundred and then spend another thousand in two years?
Yeah.
I'd rather spend the thousand now and not, you know, right? So, I mean, lopping a few zeros off this equation, but I think, so that's why I say, if the right thing to do is to fix it right.
But David, your analogy takes it so confined, and you gotta think about it. I've got a whole budget, and I gotta pay my mortgage too, and all these things.
Well, and not, not, not for nothing, the town meeting is like next week practically.
It's like all these things, and they're all competing for our dollars, so, you know, and that's why historically, everybody other funds everything.
So how long does the temp fix? Is that an unfair question to ask you?
How long what?
How long will the five hundred thousand dollar fix?
That was what the question I was gonna ask.
We, we would need the engineers to weigh in, and it's not, it's not a guarantee that this is the recommendation we're gonna make, I'm just bringing it to you. Either way, we're spending significant dollars on this culvert.
We don't want it to fail.
And if you don't fix it, you're gonna have a couple of residents in here whose, whose properties are being damaged currently by this problem.
Right.
But if we, if we say this is the way it goes, and we, to whoever made the point, we don't need town meeting cuz we have the money. You start that project, I presume, this summer or something, I don't know when you would do it. If, what am I trying to say? If you, if it was the million-dollar project, you couldn't just spend it out of rainy day money. You'd have to actually put a, an issue in front of the town, right? So, is there a possibility that, as you, we can't obviously do it for May, it's too quick.
Do it in October.
But if you learn some things, yeah, over the summer, that you just stop and you put it in front of voters in, in the fall.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Chief, it sounds like you just lost a bay.
Yeah. Well, no, that's my point, is all these things.
Yeah, okay, I mean, I would, I think that's prudent.
So we're not saying we're fixing it, we're gonna bring it to you with a much stronger recommend, I just want, I want you to start thinking about it.
The wheels have been turning, really. I can see the smoke.
This all gets integrated in our capital plan.
So the next, so the next steps would be approve twenty-four, twenty-five, which is two-thirds of the, the current chapter ninety. Hold a public hearing to gather more input, to feed your five-to-ten-year outlook, and then develop an overarching maintenance goal, which you already started tonight, which is great, and then develop the long-term, the long-term plan integrated into the capital plan. So we're talking about roads right now, and it's very easy, but then you've gotta put it into the buildings, deferred maintenance, and then operating long-term costs in order to really prioritize and scope the goal.
Yeah.
Yep.
And included in this next steps would be this assessment of the other culverts in town.
Those will eventually show up.
Somewhere in here, yeah.
So you're, you're gonna block, but each culvert is, just the, the design and investigation is a hundred and fifty grand, and then we'll know what it costs, and it's probably gonna be.
Just to determine which culverts are, need to repair, it's a hun, you're saying it's a hundred and fifty thousand per culvert?
To design, to fix.
No, I.
To design a fix, but the analysis of what, their current conditions, what, what's involved in getting that analysis done?
Would be included in that.
No, but maybe let's ask.
The whole broad thing about, about the town, like, how many culverts and where are we, how do we do that?
We, we could have another study done for that.
A niche.
Yeah.
So we'd have to pay.
Cruise the roads, do at least a, how much did this one cost?
Uh, fifty-five thousand.
So it wouldn't, so that's like, yeah, I'm what it would cost. I mean, I mean, I think that.
I, I think it would be, if you're just surveying them, then it would be a little less, I think.
Okay, but they could come back and say, okay, here are all the culverts, here are the ones that look like they're gonna be a problem, here are the big ones, blah, 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 and then we can.
And is there any overlap with the MVP work?
Yes, that's great. I was actually gonna say, and I hate to like say this out loud, but the MVP program actually could fund like a study of the culverts and also potentially like future repairs to culverts. Right, if we make the case and we tie it to all sorts of different resilience things, right?
Yeah.
That's just.
I love that.
The next.
This is supposed to be the doom and gloom presentation.
No.
No, but so I said doom and gloom part of this is that, that this here's funding round, we aren't eligible to apply for cuz we have a grant that's ongoing.
Yeah.
But the next one is like, it's like, it's like this time next year, so.
Okay.
We should be ready to pull that trigger.
Maybe we do it sooner, right, and then queue something up, like an actual repair project up for MVP grant.
Yeah.
Application next year.
Yeah.
Um, or we could, or we could wait and apply for a study.
Right, okay, yeah, okay, I gotta remember.
And there's no certainty, right, that we could get the award.
But we can't apply for the Westford group, it takes too long.
It's too.
It's too soon.
It's, yeah.
The, the power of the long-term plan, as you know, is identifying targets for grants and other funds.
Right, right, right.
So we lay out all the costs, and then we go attack it with priority grants, but we're not, it's all tied together, and I hate to use buzzwords, but the, the more sustainable our focus, the more affordable housing our focus, the more we deal with MBTA and all those other things, the more likely we are to get grants for these types of things, but it's also not a given, and there's huge implications and all of that, so.
Yeah.
We can't afford everything we need. It will need to be prioritized, and we should be targeting opportunities to leverage some of these programs in order to solve our other problems. Which is why they do it that way.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, great, thank you.
Okay, so.
Political types should be advocating our senators and legislative officials to address Carlisle's biggest need, which is addressing flood-related and other dangerous climate change infrastructure.
Well, is that something where it makes sense for us to send a letter from the select board to our reps and senators? This is a, this is state level.
Yes. Simon could tell you what I was gonna talk to him about every time we talk, which is infrastructure, culverts, roads.
Well, I just think it's good to have that done publicly though, right, and go on the record. Yeah.
Because if someone else helps handle this problem, then the stuff you were talking about before, you can address, which is buildings, et cetera. But if something doesn't get taken off the plate, you can't do it all, so we need some help somewhere.
Yeah, although I've also been talking to Simon about, you know, the equivalent of the MBA.
MTS?
No, the, um, school.
Oh, yes.
Um, building.
MTSB.
MTSB, thank you. For municipal buildings.
Also a way to help pay for culverts. So whatever way we go is fine.
Yes, yes, no, I mean, multi-pronged approach, I think, so.
Should we go on?
Okay.
Yes, okay, so do you need any, aside from maybe a letter from us to Simon or so, is there anything we need to do tonight around this?
If you, if you agree with this plan and don't need, the two-year plan, and don't need further digestion, then, then you could vote on it, or we can bring it back. We would like to get it out to bid, you know, around your next meeting or the meeting after Simon.
How about, do you like the weight?
I'll make a move, I move that we approve the two-year plan as presented tonight.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, got it.
Ryan, does that include then holding the community meeting or whatever you wanna call it, for people in town to see the list of priority, the list of roads and have an opportunity to give input?
Not for the two-year plan, but for the.
Okay, for longer term.
Input for five-year.
Okay.
Hopefully, we can start holding the input in February-ish, so that it informs this decision annually.
Yeah, so this will get reported, obviously, and so people in town will see at least the current set of roads that are planned to be worked on this year and next.
Yeah.
Yeah, the two-year plan.
So, but you'll RFP or RFQ it to, the two full two years to one paving?
Yes.
Company?
Or to eligible paving companies, yeah.
Right, what I mean is, of course eligible, but you, your goal is to select one who will do the full, all the roads in the two-year plan.
Whoever wants to do our two-year plan the cheapest.
Right, but it won't include, the culvert's its own thing, right?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right, are we ready to go on to our next agenda item?
Yeah.
The fourteen SD Road sewer agreement. We're right on time, guys, so keep it up.
Didn't we look at this last week and last?
We did.
We did, but we now have it to sign.
Yeah, just the agreement, yeah.
I didn't bother to read it, it looked like it was the same thing.
Do you want me to put the motion on the floor?
Yes, please.
All right. I move to approve the inter-municipal agreement between the town of Billrica and the town of Carlisle for the provision of municipal sewer.
Second.
Is there any discussion? We had an explanation last time.
So this will be the eventual user.
Ah.
Okay.
Oh, hi.
And would you mind just explaining it?
I live at Tennessee Road in Billrica, and I had a apostle next to me that I've owned for, geez, we lived every year, and my son got married and I gave it to him. So we went to the planning board, get it all approved, and got everything all set, and we got the subject system designed, and we got the price, and the subject system was like eight, six thousand dollars, and we sold the subject system. So, for a young couple to afford and move into a house, it's a little bit of a hit, so I have a sewer easement on my property, so we went to the town of Billrica, asked them if we could tie into the sewer, and they've given us permission, but they want your permission also. So that's basically everything, everything that we're asking for.
So as we discussed with you the last time, we talked about this, we did vet this through council, and one of our sticking points was they were gonna, we were gonna be the.
Delay.
Lee. We said no to that, so Billrica will build a resident directly, and we won't be involved, so we're just approving the inter-municipal agreement to connect, that's what this is for. And to answer Travis's question, so it's answered publicly, this does not, this does not allow the next project to have a right of way because we're approving this one. Each one has to be considered individually, and there's no precedence, according to council.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we just need to sign, sign this.
Thank you very much.
You're good.
You're welcome. Good luck with it.
Sounds lucky that you have that easement.
Yeah.
Yeah. Let's set it this way.
Nice to have him living on the property with you too, and right next door.
Okay, that was a nine o'clock. Let me get back to my, oops.
Administrator.
Okay. TA report.
All right, second please.
Pass that down if you would.
All right, my report, phase two of the second-floor cubicle project is scheduled for May twenty-second. This will close that section of town hall to the public from the twenty-first to the twenty-third. So be moving the equipment out, establishing the new cubicles, and then moving, moving our team back in. As part of this, we are boxing up and/or digitizing records, which is, which is going pretty, pretty smooth. We're all helping out the departments there that have a tremendous amount of records. And Sarah, our sustainability coordinator, found us a moving company that will take and reuse the, the cubicles, so we would have paid for their disposal, but we're gonna pay instead to have someone sustainably move them for less money, so that was, that was a win. We're also digitizing records in the executive office. We sent more than seventy boxes of records total, to include my office, records that Jen and other executive assistants had, Gretchen's records, historical commission, and others for scanning. So they'll be removing extraneous materials and duplicates, and then digitizing, and we'll be able to get rid of the space from these records, but also search them easier, which will make us more responsive to records requests and provide a better history and allow them to be backed up. For human resources, this is now from Aubrey, who's back, thank God. The benefits fair scheduled for May fifteenth, so this will give residents, employees an opportunity to come in and review their benefits from two to four. We're also going to have a little, little morale session at that time. The representatives coming from insurance and other benefits to make sure the staff has answers to their questions, and gets to talk to someone in person.
These are, all those carriers are ones we have in the plan? And is this an enrollment period? They can switch around if they like.
It's usually in the paper, isn't it?
I believe so, yes.
Okay.
So the, and it also includes school employees, so they'll be able to come as well, which is why it's extended to four. We've been interviewing candidates, and we have an accepted offer for a DPW position, but we're not bringing any, any candidates forward until they've completed their physical process from now on, so we don't have any more stops and starts with you. So we do have a candidate, we're hoping that it, that process finishes, and we'll have someone ready for appointment. So this is a heavy equipment operator that we, that we desperately need. We're down, we're down a few folks at the DPW, and they've been working shorthanded. You know that Lois retired as a driver, so we will miss Lois, and then we are still collecting resumes. We've, we've gotten some pretty good candidates for the conservation land use assistant position that's open, Mary's old position in the conservation office. We talked a lot about the communications plan and information we're sharing for town meeting. We provided the link in this report, and it's on the front page of the website so that people can easily find it. We talked about the video we're putting together, talking about the Warren articles in detail, thanks to MMN for working with this on this project, we're hoping to make it an annual thing. Social media as well, and the budget book, which provides as much detail as you want on the budget, including a line item budget, so you can see where every dollar is being spent. We want the budget to be as transparent as possible, so that people will support it. We're asked questions. We talked about the hundred and sixteen thousand in additional chapter ninety funds that we received, which is part of the presentation you saw earlier, and I am optimistic that the Fair Share Act will allocate up to about a hundred and seventy-five additional. We'll see. If you can advocate with our legislative delegation, that'd be great. We really could use the Fair Share Act. It is the most impactful legislation financially that Carlisle can receive. The ways and means budget, which did increase chapter seventy from thirty dollars a student to a hundred and four dollars a student, would net the Carlisle Public Schools around forty thousand, and the regional school, something additional. That's great. It's nothing compared to a hundred and seventy-five thousand in road maintenance money. So even a two-hundred percent increase in chapter seventy for Carlisle is much less meaningful than a simple hundred-million-dollar investment from the state in roadways for rural communities.
Ryan, when you talk to your fellow TAs, you, you're part of that rural TA group or whatever, I mean, they must all be having the same challenges, right?
Yes.
You lobby as a group?
We do. You'd be happy to know I'm on that legislative lobby, talking about chapter ninety and building support, because all small towns are facing deferred maintenance, building project costs, and roads. Because everything goes into the operating budget, and almost nothing is done in capital. It's, it's a plague for small towns because of the way the state divvies out money.
And pilot.
And what?
Not as important for us, but for other communities.
We have the, we have that big wood, you know, the great brook.
Yeah.
We could use, and, and that costs us, you know, costs us resources, police and, and fire are in there.
How much pilot do we get a year?
No, no.
I'd have to look it up. It's part of our state aid package in the budget. It didn't go up that much this year.
Yeah.
So I've approved, because you've delegated this to me, the use of the town common for the annual poppy display. This display will be on the town common from May eighteenth to June fourth. The setup is sensitive to the current global situation, and will be of peace doves. Organizers let us know that it will be installed in a manner that will not interfere with the Memorial Day ceremony, and they've coordinated with the garden club to make sure that the common use is shared. There'll be two lawn signs at either end of the common. They will state, lest we forget, Memorial Day poppy display. One thing I'm asking for you, from the Carlisle Conservation Foundation and the Trails Committee, is to designate June as Trails Month. So June first is National Trails Day. The goal is to encourage residents to learn more about and enjoy walking trails in Carlisle. The organization's plan to publicize the event, encourage access to information on the trails, highlight trail-walking opportunities, re-induce the trail marker bingo game, which I'm thrilled about, and tie in some trail-walking incentives by offering prizes at Old Home Day. So if you're willing, they would like you to designate June as Trails Month.
There is a motion in the packet. Somebody would make that?
I move that the select board recognizes and proclaims the month of June twenty-twenty-four as Carlisle Trails Month in Carlisle.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Do we, do you want me to read the proclamation?
It's in the packet.
It's in the packet, okay, great. Um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? There we go.
All right, we've talked about these, just highlighting to you again some upcoming discussion points. So online donations, we do have a request from the cultural council to allow for online donations, and we gave you an opinion from our treasurer, not against online donations, but the implications of allowing it for one committee, and then what we expect many committees, if you do approve it. We are neutral on this, we just want you to make the decision and know the implications. And then Friends of Center Park Agreement, you signed an agreement five years ago. It is up, and we are going to bring you a draft of a new agreement. So that we're ready for September when that agreement ends.
Wait, we have to sign a second?
So we're listening.
Reminding the board that, um, May seventh, you've changed your meeting in May to May seventh.
Yes.
Which is before town meeting, uh, from May fourteenth, and then the town meeting is on May thirteenth.
We wanted to ensure that Nathan would have another meeting.
One more meeting for Nathan.
One more meeting.
We also have already posted a thirty-minute meeting before annual town meeting that will be in the cafeteria.
Oh, that's another one.
Yep.
Two more.
But you do, you did miss time the election, isn't it, the week prior? May twenty-first or something?
The town election?
The town election is not.
Twenty-ninth.
Twenty-ninth.
In the calendar, it's the twenty-first. I believe it's the twenty-first. It's a week and a day after.
Oh, you're right, you're right, you're right, you're right. It's not the 29th.
Then it is the 21st. Says here on the town website, 21st.
Yep.
I want to just go back really quickly to the Friends of Center Park Agreement. So I know you circulated that before and I sent a couple of suggestions. Are, do you have those or do you want feedback on it before you do your draft?
So I did send the agreement to council so they could look at any changes or updates and your notes.
Okay. Great.
Barney's, it was public media, so Barney's notes discussed historical commission approvals for, for equipment and stuff that came up, adding that to the agreement. So you'll see that language, but it'll be called out, the differences. We wanted legal to vet it since it was already a comment.
Great. Thank you.
If you'd like me to circulate it again, if anybody has comments on it, that would be great. That should be coming up post Nathan, so you won't get to weigh in on it, but the rest of you will. And then I'm reminding everybody that June 8th to the 22nd, I will be gone for military leave, assuming I get no more diseases. That is the, the last date I can go for, for that training. So I will be now in El Paso in June, which I'm thrilled about.
Lucky you.
Okay. For recognition, Holly from the Recreation Department and I wanted to recognize our police officers with a special recognition for Sergeant Mack and his wife for their efforts during the town's recent bike safety program. So this was identified as a need from the community. The police officer stepped up and executed a program for more than 15 residents, even in the rain, where officers learned how, officers taught residents, mostly young residents, how to safely navigate their bikes. Holly also said that officers Andrew Corwin and Dean Barbera worked hard to give the participants a great experience and they're hoping to make this an annual event. And I have a picture of the kids riding around the cruiser. Really appreciate the efforts of Chief Amendola and the Police Department for engaging with the community, especially in this way, which helps our youngest residents. And then I have a draft agenda.
We should look at that.
And we have time for once.
Yeah.
Can I ask a quick question about the agenda? Could, would you explain the item four, initial vacancies and committee policy discussion? What your, what that will entail?
Yep. That comes from Gretchen and Aubrey and myself. So we wanted to give you more time this year to discuss vacancies and appointments and to advertise them per your policy. So if someone's coming up, that position needs to be advertised and then you'll get a list of all the people that want to, per your, per your policy, to fill those vacancies. So you'll get that initial vacancy list and we also have highlighted a couple boards and committees that we need you to, to make decisions on, keeping them, not keeping them, and appointment timeframes, et cetera. So just some minor things, nothing, nothing big.
Okay.
And then we should probably adjust the policy to match reality.
Yeah.
Okay.
Did you want, you wanted to Hanscom?
I, I was going to ask you about that, yeah.
Just before we do that, and then the shared services goals. What's item five? What's the thought there?
So I'm going to recirculate the shared services presentation you got from MAPC and going to apply for a second round of that grant where we identify four or five shared service opportunities that you would like MAPC to investigate.
Okay.
We want to have your input on what those four or five things should be. So we'll recirculate the report and you can, and think about it again, but this would be a deeper dive into regionalizations that have been identified as opportunities and would be vetted with other communities and what they've done. So the third version of this study would be if you select a regionalization, what that implementation would look like. So let's say you wanted to share the TA with another town and that was identified as something you wanted to study. The first, second study would say, here's other towns that have done that and what that looks like. The third study would be, here's how you implement that sharing agreement.
We're only on study one so far.
So far.
This is for study two, identifying some things we want to study, Phase Two.
One of the things that was discussed prior to me getting here and during the regionalization discussion was maintenance. And we've started to implement that process with some of those suggestions. So IT is another thing that comes up a lot. And other sharing opportunities.
Okay, good. Yeah, on the, the Hanscom expansion question, so the ESC, as you all saw, they wrote asking us to consider that again. And I had understood when I wrote to all of us saying, I thought this would, that would be a good thing for us to discuss at the May 7th meeting was, I had understood that because there's a public comment period that ends May 12th, that there was some sense of timing, that we should try to have this conversation in order to be able to submit those comments. Well, it turns out, I guess that's not the case in terms of a, a board, you know, discussion and vote on whether or not to support that expansion. And so according to a member of the Sustainability Committee, who's very much involved in this, we have time if we wanted to wait and have that conversation at a, at say the meeting later in May or early June even.
What is the timetable for the approval of?
When the, when the state will actually make a decision?
Yeah.
Yeah. I think it's going to come up sometime in the fall. They close the public comment period and then.
So they haven't made a decision?
No.
It's been proposed and being evaluated.
Has the governor weighed in on it yet?
Has who?
The governor?
She supports it. And then people are saying, well, how can you be a green governor? How can, because she's also supporting.
It's business, I think, yeah.
But she does support it, so.
Yeah, on economic, you know, for economic reasons.
She's visiting us this weekend and debating whether to ask her.
Your company?
Yeah. I don't think I'm going to ask her. Yeah, she's coming because we're doing a lot of like green tech stuff.
Yeah. You know, one thought I had about this, having this conversation is that we could, and I know when we talked about it very briefly, you know, months ago, we wanted to hear sort of from folks that were proposing the expansion. So I think if, once we do schedule, we ought to reach out to the, the people that are proposing the expansion and ask if somebody wants to come to be doing it.
I think that's critical. I think we'd want to be able to ask the.
Yeah, absolutely.
I know there was a leak of women voters thing, but they didn't have that.
It was one-sided.
It was only one-sided.
Yeah, I mean, it wasn't bad, but it was one-sided.
Again.
Both sides.
We should get both sides, I agree.
Yeah. And I think, I mean, I, which may be an argument for not doing it on the 7th as well, so that we have time to make sure we can get somebody here.
Why don't we work towards that?
And we have to have a goal for a, a, a time that we want to do it to kind of incentivize us to get that, those people.
Well, maybe that last select board meeting in May.
Well, you should reach out, we should identify what group we have to contact.
Massport.
Is it Massport? Okay. Do you want to, maybe Barney wants to take the contact assignment? Should that be from the town or from the select?
Yeah, I would contact them.
All right, good. So see when they have time.
That meeting in May is, when is that? The last, our last meeting in May would be the 28th, yeah. Or we could obviously go into June if for some reason or other we couldn't get the, somebody and then obviously ask somebody from ESC or if they want to suggest somebody else, yeah, to, to offer their side of it.
Yep. Okay.
That's great. Okay.
We held some time for town meeting. We will be filling that now with discussion from tonight and the, any last comments on the, on the police station, I think. So you have the town clerk, the police station, and then the revolving funds. So a couple will be recommended to go down to zero. And those are non-controversial, there's no money and they haven't been used. And then we would try to remove them in the fall from the bylaw so they wouldn't show up again. So just more cleanup.
Okay. Good.
Okay.
And we're saying on the 7th, we're going to add a piece about the town clerk, right?
Yes. That's part of the.
It will be part of the town meeting.
Part of the town meeting. It won't be a separate thing, it's going to be part of the town.
Gotcha, gotcha. Okay. Even though it's not a town meeting item, it's a election.
Town meeting and election, you know. We can change that to town meeting and election.
Say town meeting, election, public hearing.
Yeah. Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
We retitle it.
Yeah. Makes sense.
So do you want, if we do, back to the letter and the messaging, do you want to move that up to an earlier time? Like typically if we're going to have kind of a hearing or a thing where we want people to attend, you don't want to park it, you'd like to put it up.
Put it earlier in the meeting, yeah, when you guys are doing the agenda.
And it should be earlier because if it goes over, it's more important than anything that's not timed.
Right. So you should probably do it like first, basically, before poll petition, whatever.
After the poll. Poll petition's vital.
I first saw that, I was thinking towards racing.
What is a poll petition?
Come on, don't you want, you always want the poll position.
Yeah, I know, but what is the poll petition?
I don't, I have no idea.
Is it a petition to get the position?
They want a telephone poll?
Put in the poll, you.
Yeah.
Need to have a hearing.
We can, right away. So we have to give them permission.
Oh, I see. Okay. So after that is what you're saying? Or after vacancies?
Because that's an appointment.
Okay.
I take it. Made an appointment.
Okay.
Anyway.
Got it.
Okay. Can we move along?
Yeah.
Excellent. I think we're at liaison reports?
Yeah.
Because we did our minutes?
Yep.
All right. Anybody besides me have a liaison report?
Well, I, I kind of already talked about the TSM, TES, TMSC, I already kind of gave you the highlights of it.
Yes.
You know, we've had some meetings. We have one more meeting before the town meeting, so we got to button up these last few things like the, the little video and stuff. The other liaison report is from today. I went to the Council on Aging Human Services Board meeting. They are preparing their slate for new officers in accordance with our guidelines. So they'll bring it back to us what they've decided, but they've set it for a vote. I presume that they do it now the right way. I don't know. They, they vote and then they present to us or they present to us, we approve it. I think they vote on it and then they come back for our approval.
They're sending it, they're recommending it to us.
Yeah, they're recommending to us. So I think that's set. They're having a separate meeting. They've now gone to two meetings. That meeting is about community center and there's some discussion with Village Court to use some part of their facility.
Oh, and COA.
They use sleeper room. The community room over there.
To become a kind of a community. So, so they're thinking about that and they're thinking about other stuff, so.
Yeah.
Anyway, so, you know, that's what's going on.
Good. MFC, anything? So last night I went to the planning board and, you know, they had the usual stuff, the scenic roads hearings and things like that. There was a report on MVP and MBTA communities, an update on that. I'd be happy to go over those if you're, you know, want to have that here. But I think the most important discussion they had last night was around a response to the Board of Health septic rigs that have been sent around.
So Julie did a tremendous amount of work there.
She did a tremendous amount of work. And John did too, John Mativier. And there seems to be some issues that I think warrant, I don't, so I guess what I'm going to put out here is, do they warrant our participation and involvement? Tomorrow, there will be a, tomorrow evening, a public hearing. Are you the BOH?
Yeah, I wasn't aware of the hearing. Tell me about that.
Interesting.
It's a public hearing on the septic rigs?
On the septic rigs. And it would be nice if one of us could possibly attend.
It sounds like, I was going to ask Julie that anyway. Is there a jurisdictional issue?
Yes. I would say so.
So who's holding the hearing?
Board of Health.
But do.
There, there, there's a juridic, jurisdictional issue insofar that it looks like the new Board of Health rigs run over a lot of our zoning bylaws and make them impossible to follow. I shared, I shared.
We saw it at the last minute, so we haven't.
So it's 33 pages, the first four are memo for me, kind of going through all the issues and an analysis and some comments and questions. And then there's an attachment from John where he went through the rigs line by line and inserted his own comments.
Yeah, so I mean, I'm, I'm not clear on what we are supposed to do. They're holding a hearing about, like.
The thing is that all they need to do is hold a hearing and then they can adopt those, those regulations. They don't need to go to town meeting or anything.
Even if there requires bylaw changes?
Even if.
Regulations.
Because they're regulations, but.
Yeah. They, they are able to, by single majority vote, change their regulations in such a way that it will impact zoning and current personal property rights that have been granted to the town by a two-thirds majority vote of town meeting and it's in the zoning bylaw. So it's a, that's my big, like, thing I'm struggling with, that this is that.
So I think the one thing we could do is ask them to post, you know, what I worry about is they'll have their meeting.
Right, they'll vote it and then they're.
And then they'll vote it and it's done and nobody's had a chance to.
Did they request your memo or you just put it up, took it on yourself?
No. Not only did they not.
So has there been any discussion with the Board of Health?
I think we were talking about it last night.
Let me answer, I, just let me answer David's question. They did not request that memo. In fact, when the memo was submitted to them, they said, we don't care what you write.
Stay in your swim lane.
We would like to hear what the, the planning board has to say about the, your memo first. So.
That was the staff member though, not the board.
I'm sorry. Oh, a staff member said that about the memo that Julie wrote?
Yeah.
Okay. And what the planning board decide last night? Did they take a decision?
The planning board wrote a letter, I can read it, well, it's a very short thing, but it said, it asked, also requested that the Board of Health not finalize anything until they were, they want, they were requesting a joint planning board, Board of Health meeting.
That's a good idea.
And that was written to the board, because you wrote the health agent, but without, I didn't see the Board of Health copy.
No, that was asked to, no, but you asked the agent to send it to the board.
So I have a separate, I have written a separate letter from the planning board to the Board of Health, because they have a joint meeting.
So word to board, they're, they're doing that.
Yeah, so that's from the planning board to the Board of Health Chair. And then the, the memo that I sent, like, later on, earlier this evening, but later on after that letter, was the planning board empowered staff to compile comments and submit. So the planning board didn't actually review everything that's in the document that I submitted, but they reviewed a lot of the content of it last night, as well as John's feedback. And they agreed that staff could submit comments in advance of tomorrow night's hearing and they agreed that staff could submit comments in advance of tomorrow night's hearing for the board's consideration, so.
So the hearing tomorrow is not booked, it's just a hearing of?
I don't know.
What they decide.
I don't know that. It's the second of the two hearings they have scheduled, so.
What time is it, is there a link?
It says 7, I think.
Has it been sent out?
Unfortunately, I cannot make it.
So the opposite of our town meeting approach.
Yes.
Under the cover of night?
It's like, don't invite anybody to talk about it and just do it.
I submitted some comments or remember how they, and I actually reached out to one of the engineers who seems to do a lot of business in town, Stamski McNary, to ask if they had any comments and they weren't even aware that it was, you know, having open for public comment. So one of the engineers submitted some comments to the board, but I haven't heard anything since then.
And do we have any sense of what the Board of Health, they got the request for a joint meeting today sometime? And no response yet?
I haven't had a response yet.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, we got those rigs, you asked for more information, like, you know, we said, no, we're not engineers, give us, you know, like the top level. And we got a set of definitions, but we never really got a document that said, this is what we're planning on changing and this is where the differences are. We didn't get the document that Julie prepared for us, which was a distillation of what the changes were and what they were. So, but they did invite us to, at one...
Right.
To reply and so I'm wondering if we want to then now also make other input or...
Or maybe minimally, we as a select board should, if we're all in agreement, encourage the Board of Health to have that joint meeting with the planning board before they make any final decisions.
And the building inspector?
Yeah, however, whoever should be involved in that.
I think that fits with our master plan, it fits with the Governance Task Force Plan that we're trying to reduce the amount of silos that we have in town and this is kind of one of those examples where, you know, there are a lot of well-intentioned people in Carlisle who are doing great things, but we just need to make sure everybody's talking with each other about those things.
I agree. See what they do.
Yeah.
Are you starting your dialogues? You've been dialoguing?
I'll talk to you about that later.
Okay. Well, I mean, there's nothing else we can do, right? If they, we'll learn a lot from their reaction.
Right, okay, so...
Is someone going tomorrow?
I cannot.
I'm just emailing Linda right now to get the link. I mean, I wasn't even given the link, which I find out because she generally sends me.
I don't know if it's hybrid even.
It's probably on the website.
Is it on the website?
It should be posted, right?
It must be.
Yeah, I could potentially, but to go remotely.
You cannot go physically.
Yeah. But are we in agreement as a select board that we should, maybe, I don't know, Kate, if you do this on behalf of the board, but whatever, we should be sending something to the board chairs of the planning board and the Board of Health to just say we concur them all to have that joint meeting before making any further decisions?
Can do that.
Yep, I would do that. I would do that.
Okay, Board of Health, it is in the calendar, here. Hybrid, in person and remote.
Okay, so there's...
Seven. Okay.
Here it is.
Do we know, was court able, was court able to reach?
Patrick?
Patrick? You don't, you don't know? Because he offered to do that last night and gave him his phone number, so hopefully that happened. All right, I will, I will write a memo to the two chairs encouraging them to do a joint meeting. Anything else that we want to do?
Would you like, you know, like, say, take a vote on that and have it unanimously authorized?
Okay.
I don't know if that helps you.
No, no, I don't know if it does or not.
Or maybe I shouldn't even prejudge that.
It's in the calendar.
Can you see the thing? Where's the little?
I wish the calendar authorized that.
What does it say, agendas?
Oh, I don't know. Hang on.
How did you get to where you're at?
Well, I'm on an iPad, so.
So, oops.
Okay, well, I need, you're gonna, do you want, would it be stronger if it comes from the board?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so then I need a motion.
Yeah, the way as a board, okay.
A motion and a vote.
Well, I move that the select board encourage the planning board and the Board of Health to meet, to discuss the proposed septic regulations before the Board of Health makes any final decisions.
Second.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, I will do that tomorrow.
Great.
Anything else is okay? Any other business? Are we ready?
Community input.
Community input.
I don't see a link.
I have one quick comment if I have Tom, I don't want to keep you guys.
Hey, John.
Hi, guys, the cop came back.
I don't know if you can make it any louder. Yeah, you're very faint.
I can't make it any louder from my end, how's that?
That's better.
Put the mic right next to my mouth. Does that work?
Yes, that's better.
Okay, so I just, I'm focused on the fire department. The OPM, I think is a good idea, just in rap music, OPM means other people's money. So I think that tasking, tasking the OPM by the select board is gonna be challenging, potentially the most rewarding part of the project if you get the tasking right as well as the person and some other people that pointed out, that could really work out well. And I said this in a couple of emails I sent you guys that think you need to consider setting a goal for the fire department, a mission statement for the fire department as opposed to different features like you were working on tonight. It's just, it's what I learned in project management, so you have features set and you have a project, they're two different things. Also, I've written you a little bit about this, you know, some system of measurement, Chisoros has gone back to the NFPA, which is the National Fire Partners Association or something like that. But what insurance companies use is the ISO, which I've written you before, the insurance services organization standards and classification, that's 150 years old and it's kind of a where the money meets the road system because they have all the data from the past hundreds of years, 150 years for fires and properties they've covered across the United States. So they know within a dollar range how much a fire department's classification level is gonna match up with how much money they end up paying out for a fire damage. So it's what's used by all the insurance companies and every fire department in America has an ISO rating and we do too. And it determines the level of equipment they need, et cetera, and I don't want to beat on this too much, but somebody needs to make an argument of why we need to improve on that. That was in Brian's kind of position paper. He set out early in this process that he wanted to improve on our current Class 8B rating, why and how much is that gonna cost? And as I said, if it ends up with fire hydrants or a fire hydrant facsimile for Carlisle, if you think the fire station is expensive, wait till you find out how much that's gonna cost. And the final thing is data collection. David brought this up early when he asked Brian, you know, have you compared Carlisle to other small town fire stations around Massachusetts? And I couldn't really hear Brian's answer, but I think it was no. So there are 35 towns our size, 5,000, 7,500 people in Massachusetts. They all have websites like we have listing their apparatus, they all have descriptions of their fire department. It's not that hard to get basic information. You could also get their ISO rating, they all have ISO ratings, the fire department chiefs all know them inside out because it's how they're judged. And it wouldn't be that hard, time-consuming maybe, but not that hard to look all those up online and put them in a, in a matrix, a database of those spreadsheets so that you cross-reference all these things, like how many towns our size with our rural footprint have a ladder truck? Is ladder truck needed for a Class 8B rating?